Four, five, six, seven.
Huh?
Oh, no, sorry. How many? Give it a run.
You count them?
Fifty-two, alright. I'll go with that.
Good evening, I call a Lawrence City Council meeting to order. Today's Tuesday, April 2nd. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Councilor Vasquez, Councilor Plant.
Here.
Councilor Toomey.
Here.
Councilor Reyes.
Present.
Councilor Monte.
Present.
Councilor Kino.
Present.
Councilor Bernal.
Present.
Councilor Vice President Rivera.
Present.
And Council President Moran.
Here, please rise from mourn of silence. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilor, first item on the agenda is acceptance of the minute for March 19th. I need a motion to approve.
Some move to second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let's have a next item on the agenda is public participation. Participants, you have two and a half minutes to state your comments. After two minutes, a bell will ring. You have thirty seconds to wrap up your comments. Please address the city council as a whole, not as individuals. First, participant H. Mali. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, H. Mali, fifty-three Chester Street. Good evening, honorable member of the Lawrence City Council. In this exciting election year of 2013, our citizens can see how our city is moving forward with the leadership of honorable Mayor Lantigua. In this important election year, we as the citizen demand of you support of our police department and their union. With the leadership of honorable Chief Romeo, the crime rate declined nineteen percent, auto theft thirty-three percent. We demand support of their union and do not touch their budget. The Crime Prevention Unit, community policing, has been important to us. Our citizens are witnessing that the best performance of our DPW in this stormiest winter. This DPW worker has been done the best job with the best leadership. In their upcoming contract negotiation, we demand support of our DPW worker. Our firefighter again in a tremendous fire in Iran Hennessy School proven are the best firefighter in the whole nation. But remind you, they have been working for a long time without any contract. We as a citizen demand of you support our firefighter, also our brother firefighter, Tim Atwood. Our city has a responsibility to clean up around the Hennessy School because the children are walking to the Hennessy. Honorable Mayor Lantigua brought to our children the gift of the turnaround plan and Harvard Scholar Superintendent Rally. We report to you that our public school are for the first time after years moving forward. But our teacher, they must know, they are most important part of the turnaround plan. And our support of our citizens, our teachers, never been the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Next participant, Matt Evangelista. Name and address for the record, please, Matt.
Forty-five George Brown Street in Dorica. I'm here to talk tonight, I'm the theater teacher at the high school. And we have an unbelievable opportunity coming up in August 2013. Last year, we were nominated to represent Massachusetts at the Fringe Festival in Edinburgh, Scotland. We were nominated through the American High School Theater Festival for excellence in high school theater. So, we've actually written a piece, it was a piece we were nominated for entitled Circle Game, which is a piece exploring stereotyping of urban youth in America today, and especially that of Lawrence students. So, we are fundraising right now, and so we're kind of reaching out to everybody in the community to help us get there. We fundraised almost fifty thousand dollars thus far in the past year towards a trip, and that's just hitting the halfway point. We have seventy-five days left to fundraise the rest of that. We've applied for dozens and dozens of grants, but we're looking for the community's support now within the last kind of stretch of our fundraising, so hence I'm here. So, we've tried to get letters out to you guys as best we could, but we have proposals for everyone to take a look at, just explaining a little bit more about the trip at the Fringe, and a little bit more about the production that we're putting on. So, and we also have enough for anybody else that would like a copy tonight. And so, we're just asking everyone to spread the word. We have an online donation site, we have fundraisers coming up over the next two months in the city, and any support, even just telling somebody else about the trip, would be a tremendous help to us. We have seventy-five days left, there are over seventy thousand residents in this city, and everybody gave one dollar, we would be done with fundraising. And so, we're getting there, so any support, word of mouth, anything will be unbelievable, so thank you very much, that's all we got.
Thank you. How can anybody get in touch with you?
I am at the high school, so they can call the high school and just ask for me.
What's the number?
I have everything on here, so they can, we have these for people to get in touch with. They can also send me an email through the school site, so if you just go to, you know, www.laurence.k-12.m-a.us, just the regular public school website. Scroll down to the left, there's a picture of the kids that are going, there's the two articles that the Eagle Tribune wrote up about us over the past year, there's our donation site, there's more information about the trip. And you can get everything right through the school website, or contact us directly right at the high school.
Just if there's a number on that piece of paper, you should probably read it out loud, because then people can see it at home.
The best number to reach me directly, which is the best way to do it, is to call me at seven eight one three zero seven five eight five zero. And people can actually go on and donate online at www.fundly.com/pfahighschoolgoes to the Fringe Festival. But again, it's right on the Lawrence, the main Lawrence Public Schools webpage, you can find all of the information right there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next participant, Dick Russell. Name and address for the record, please.
My name's Dick Russell, thirty-four Cross Street. Last week in the Eagle Tribune, we had the continuing saga of Mayor Lantigua's book, Better Government by Crisis Management. One of the councilors lamented in difficulty in finding people for various boards and commissions, because people just don't want to go in front of the council and be scrutinized. While I'd like to say scrutinize me, but unfortunately Commonwealth of Massachusetts has already scrutinized me, and said that being unenrolled as a voter does not pass the sniff test to the appointment of the board of registrars. According to chapter fifty-one of the MGL's, board of registrar position go to members of the two leading political parties. Lawrence is about fifty-five percent Democrat, six percent Republican, thirty-seven percent unenrolled, which I am. Thirty-seven is bigger than six, right? Chapter fifty, the MGL defines the leading political parties as the two parties that got the most votes in the previous state election. This information was confirmed to me by representatives of the Election Division, the Secretary of State's office. This individual also advised me some discussion on this issue had taken place before the Joint Committee on Election Laws on Beacon Hill in Boston. This committee is chaired on the Senate side by Senator Feingold, and on the House side by our own council president, Representative Moran, as a member. When you take into account the political enrollment figures from the ten seventeen, two thousand and twelve, on the Secretary of State's site, that show almost fifty-three percent of the voters in Massachusetts are unenrolled, thirty-six percent are Democrat, and eleven percent are Republican, I can pretty much guess that nothing will be done to upset the status quo. Getting back to the board of registrars mess, I submitted an application after Ron Martin departed for bigger and better things. The application asked if I possessed any skills, to which I responded by writing that I was white, I was honest and capable accounting. Somehow, I don't think those skills fit into the mayor's political agenda. Some of you may call this sour grapes, I call it political honesty. One other issue, about the mayor defending the Deodamo Papers from release under the public records law. I, as a taxpayer, want to know when the city checkbook is going to be slammed shut on the mayor. Why isn't the overseer raising any concerns of this expenditure of city funds? I guess that the fact that the overseer was a former mayor, he understands the CYA philosophy, even if you have to use the public's money to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next participant, Kathy Ronge. Name and address for the record, please, Kathy.
Kathy Ronge, thirty-two Drake Street. Good evening, everyone. If we've learned anything over the past year, it's that the city council needs to be able to take over the process of appointing people to city boards if the mayor, any mayor, anytime, does not submit candidates in a timely fashion as terms expire. I mean, the licensing board, we have an acting chair that's serving with an expired term. Are their votes even valid? And the Board of Election Registrars has members that are snuck in in the middle of the night, in between mayoral recalls, that don't even appear before the city council. You know, what does that say about our elections? And I feel ashamed of myself for believing the information on the city website for the past year about the board members. You know, the new person wasn't even mentioned for sixteen months, after, it's still not mentioned. You know, that just speaks volumes, volumes about the state of the elections process in Lawrence. And I thought I'd give you, I'm not sure if there's plenty of copies for everybody there, a reason why we need the Board of Registrars. We need the Board of Registrars, because I sent that letter to them last week, in which there are two pairs of duplicate registrations, both of which got counted somehow as voting in the November election. And I am challenging them. And I could send a letter like this to the Board of Registrars once a month for over a year. We need to know why this happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next participant, Councilor Reyes.
Good evening, all of you.
Good evening, council. More than a petition, what I wanted is to wish a happy birthday to our president, Fran Moran.
That ends public participation. These names will be submitted to the city clerk's office to be archived. Thank you. Councilor, there's an item on the agenda I'd like to take off the table and out of order. I invited the president of Northern Essex Community College to give us an update on the construction of the building on Common Street. I think that's a building that we shall be proud of, I think it's going to bring a lot of revenue into the downtown area, and also is going to bring, it's going to attract more jobs into the community. Looking for a motion to take it off the table and out of order. Ready a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have a document one eighty-eight dash eleven, Northern Essex Community College Construction Sign on Common Street. Name and address for the record, Mr. President.
Lane Glenn, Northern Essex Community College, one hundred Elliott Street in Havre, or forty-five Franklin Street, right here in the great city of Lawrence.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time this evening, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming, giving us an update on this beautiful building.
Happy to be here. Very glad to be here. I've given you two items tonight, you have in front of you, Senator, Councilman Moran has a, or LaPlant, rather, has a copy of it in his hand there, Voices, which is our college's strategic plan. As you have a chance to look at that, you'll find in the back of that, five particularly important goals that the college has for itself over the next few years. Item number one of those goals is the expansion of our urban campus here in Lawrence. It's a top priority for Northern Essex Community College, and we've been hard at work at it. The other item you have is a couple of maps, satellite maps, showing you just in the last three years, how the college has tripled its footprint here in Lawrence. What you don't see there is our property down at the Riverwalk, but just in the last three years, we've moved into space down at the Riverwalk, we've opened the iHealth facility over here on Lowell and Franklin Street. We've added a chemistry lab to our Hafner-Fornier Education Center with some private funds that we raised, a half million dollar chemistry lab there. We have, as I'm sure you know by now, taken down the old registry building, and are in the process of converting that into some parking and a park, some green space. We have also, well, we will be opening this fall, the Health and Technology Center. We actually have a date that I can share with you, and we'll be able to walk in and look around that building, I'll be glad to show you around personally. October the twenty-ninth, we're going to go into that building. It'll be open for business in January, for classes to start up, but October, November, December, our faculty and staff will be in there setting up. That will be the new way that our students enter the college. Our admissions center will be there in the new Health and Technology Center, a one-stop for students to find their way into Northern Essex. In addition to those things, and I think you probably knew about most of those things already, a couple of other items that you might want to be aware of. Just yesterday, and Councilman Moran, Representative Moran was there, over at our Havre campus, there was an announcement by the Massachusetts Life Sciences Center, that the college has received a one point two million dollar grant to expand our science programs. Part of that expansion involves an additional science lab here on our Lawrence campus, so that we can expand our lab science program over here. That's a program that puts students directly to work with an associate's degree at places like Charm Sciences here in Lawrence, so we're very happy about that. In addition to that, we'll be renovating our library in the Demetrie Building as we move some programs out of there. We're enlarging the library, turning it into a two-story library, so there'll be a lot more resources there for our students and for the community to access. Beyond those things, we have been in conversation with the city, I don't think this is any great secret, about the potential for a police and fire training facility here in Lawrence that the college might be involved with. In addition to that, as of today, I checked to make sure I could say this before coming in here tonight, we're okay. As of today, we're under agreement on a property over here on Common Street, right across from the Health and Technology Center, where we intend to open up a ground floor bookstore for the entire community. Bookstore, restaurant, a couple of other items in there that certainly our students will take advantage of. You may not know this, we have a Barnes and Noble in the basement of our Demetrie Building over there. You probably didn't know that, because all they sell is textbooks. We really wanted to get something up on the street level that the whole community could take advantage of. So, we're doing that, expanding a bookstore, putting it at ground level on Common Street, alongside of a restaurant café, kind of a space for students and the entire community to enjoy. We are, of course, always looking at new parking lot options, and believe me, we're hearing from lots of people interested in helping to show us properties in that regard. The more we can do to work with the city to help our students and the residents downtown, the better. Couple of other modest things, you know, we're putting up some new fencing, we're trying to work on, you know, alleys and lighting and signage, not just on our property, but near our property. We did submit a Mass Works proposal along with the city recently, that wasn't funded this time around, but we have high ambition that it'll be funded the next time, and we're trying to work our channels to make sure that that can happen. Because it's important, it's important. We want to be good neighbors, we want to be good partners, we want to be a good anchor institution here in the city for our students and for all the residents of Lawrence. So, those are a few items underway. It is our number one strategic goal, I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Anybody have a question for the president?
My ears immediately perked up when you said police and fire, community public safety building, can you give us a little bit more detail on that?
At the moment, we're sort of talking about what, you know, what it might look like for the college to enter into, you know, training arrangements with the city as a regional training provider. We're still working through what that might look like, but certainly have been in several months now worth of conversations with the city and with state agencies, about what level of training might be needed for the northeast part of the state, and what kind of facility, you know, might be created as a result of that. It's something that, from our perspective as a community college here in the northeast, we have a large criminal justice program, we have a large paralegal program, so we have related programs for the field, we have an EMT program for first responders. It's the kind of thing that we think we could do more of here in Lawrence, for Lawrence, but also for the region. And if there's a way to couple that with, you know, facilities that are needed by the city, we'd like to be able to do that.
Anybody else? No, I just want to thank you, Mr. President, for being here and giving us this wonderful news. It's always, all this economic development is going on in the city, we want to be able to showcase this, make sure that we get the word out there, that it's a lot of good things happening in our community, and I want to thank you for taking your time out of your day, and I know your kids are here with you, but thank you for making that effort to give us an update.
It's a great city, we're glad to be a part of it, anytime you'd like to hear from us, just let me know.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Looking for a motion to read table.
Some moved?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have a. Councilor, I'd like to take document seventy-nine dash thirteen out of order.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have a document seventy-nine dash thirteen, Resolution Twenty Thirteen Boston Globe Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. This item was submitted by Council Vice Chair Dan Rivera, I believe he's a student from the Community Day Charter School.
Yes, they are.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, councilors and people in the audience, I just want to take a time out of, we got so many urgent matters that are before us, I'm just going to take a chance to stop and kind of smell the roses, in a sense, to talk about some kids who are doing really good stuff. Some of you might have noticed in the Boston Globe a couple of weeks ago, there was a list of students who participated in the Boston Globe Scholastic Art and Writing Awards Contest. This was the ninetieth year, they've done it nationally, the sixty-third year, they've done it here in Boston, and so in Massachusetts, seventy-seven hundred sixty-eight students in grade seven through twelve submitted thirteen thousand seven hundred seventy-six images of art, and fifteen hundred fifty-nine pieces of student writing were submitted, both individually and within a portfolio. So, this was the Twenty Thirteen Boston Globe Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. There was a panel of three individuals were selected by the advisory board to judge fifteen art classifications and ten writing genres. Say all that to say that it was a big deal, that out of all those kids, six of the kids from Lawrence got picked, some honorable mentions, some got some of the awards, and some students received gold keys, silver keys, or honorable mentions. So, I wanted to take the time to identify them and show them that we appreciate what they did for the city by participating, but also by achieving as well. So, we're just going to call them up one at a time, so we can give them a quick certificate of appreciation. Can we have Nicole Rivera? Is she here? So, Nicole gets here, she actually won two awards for honorable mention, for her personal essay, Superwoman, and Could It Be That Thing Called Love? And she's also the starting center captain of the school basketball team. Nicole. And then we have Sean Jimenez, and he got an honorable mention for personal essay, Artistic Confidence. Sean is thirteen, and he likes performing in visual arts. Take him, Sean. Then we have Joannie Molina, she has silver key for Flash Fiction, The Unusual Brothers. Joannie's fourteen, and she wants us to know that she loves art. And we have Marquez Mendoza, honorable mention for poetry, Butterflies Shock. Marquez is fourteen, in the eighth grade, he also wants us to know that his parents are part Dominican and part French Canadian, and he loves art too. Then we have, I think you guys want to face that way. So, folks at home can see you. I think we have Melania Vargas, he got an honorable mention for poetry, I just did that one, huh? Yeah, no, this one, Butterfly Shock, I did it wrong. Anyway, Butterfly Shock is Marquez Mendoza. Here we go. Khalil. And this one is Khalil Negron, gold key for poetry, The Deer. Khalil's thirteen, and in the seventh grade, he lives in Tower Hill. He wants us to know that he loves baseball, and he also won two MVP baseball awards, but more importantly, he got a gold key, and that means that his work is going to be included on the national competition in New York City. Some of the parents in the audience, we want to thank the parents for the work they do with their kids, but also Terry Costello, the teacher from the Community Day Charter School, he should come up, and everybody should think, that thinks about Terry. So, thank you very much, and any of you guys want to say something, you can, but more than anything, we just wanted to make sure you guys were identified. And somebody did a joke one here, and I want, Melania said he actually is a funny guy, and his piece was a humor piece, All For A Piece Of Chicken. Maybe you could forward that to me, so I could read it. Well, thank you guys for coming, and thank the parents, and thank.
Councilor, I'd like to take document eighty-four dash thirteen out of order.
Some moved?
Ready a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have a document eighty-four thirteen, Resolution Alcohol Awareness Month. Item was submitted by Councilor Monte, Councilor Monte.
Thank you. Well, we all know it's getting nice out, and we took over October as Drug Prevention Month. We took it upon ourselves to educate the kids, and we went out to the schools. Lawrence Smithone Community Coalition does a great work with the mayor's division and everything else, but we also wanted to, let me read this proclamation into record. "We, the members of the Lawrence City Council, hereby present this proclamation as follows: Whereas alcohol is a primary factor in four leading causes of death for young persons ages ten to twenty-one; and whereas almost one hundred thousand people die each year from alcohol-related causes, drinking and driving crashes and other accidents, falls, fires, alcohol-related homicides, and suicides; and whereas approximately fifteen million current drinkers in the United States are dependent on alcohol; and whereas alcohol-related problems cost America two hundred and twenty-four billion dollars in large productivity, absenteeism, healthcare costs, crime, and family-related problems; and whereas adolescents use alcohol more than tobacco or illicit drugs; and young people begin drinking on average at the age of thirteen; and whereas young people who begin drinking before the age of fifteen are four times more likely to develop alcohol dependence than those who begin drinking at age twenty-one; and whereas alcohol abuse is linked to as many as two-thirds of all sexual assaults and date rapes; and whereas alcohol abuse is a major factor in unprotected sex, increasing risk of contacting HIV or other transmitted diseases; and as where the typical American will see one hundred thousand beer commercials before he or she turns eighteen, which is more than a sneakers, a gum commercial, jeans commercial, or even educational commercials. Now, therefore, to it be resolved that we, the members of the Lawrence City Council of this great city of Lawrence, hereby proclaim April twenty thirteen as Alcohol Awareness Month, and encourage the people of Lawrence to support and participate in alcohol prevention education activities for the kids of our city. And these are all signed by the members of the Lawrence City Council, and I want to thank everybody for helping me to adopt this, so that we can teach the kids of our city that we do care about them, and we're willing to help them move forward. Thank you."
Thank you. Next item, I'd like to take document eighty-five dash thirteen out of order.
Some moved?
Ready a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have a document eighty-five thirteen, DVD to be donated to Lawrence Public Library. Item was submitted by Councilor from District Kiff, Councilor LaPlant.
Thank you very much, Council President, city councilors, I welcome Ms. Maureen Nemo, the public library director. Since the beginning of this year, I've been collecting, thanks to the help of the clerk and the staff here, each of our city council meetings, not only our full city council meetings, but also our committee meetings. And it's really important, I think, that we make, the important things that we do here, almost weekly, available to the public, so if they want to see the work that we're doing, they're able to go ahead and to actually view it. And so, in an attempt to try to make our government as accessible as possible, as open and transparent as possible, donating and will continue to provide to the Lawrence Public Library, each of our DVDs from all of our meetings. For example, the full council meeting, Budget Committee, ordinance one's pretty heavy, Ordnance Committee, Housing Committee, and the Personnel Committee.
Alright, thank you so much. I mean, this is really something that we appreciate, because I know just as a citizen, it's sometimes difficult to find what you want to see at a meeting. I watch the television, but it's unpredictable, and there's also times you just missed one piece of a meeting, that was something that involved you, or you were really concerned about. This is a real great addition to our collection, to have all the city business right out there for everyone to see. And, you know, you people do, you know, a good work in our city, and you should be recognized, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of people who are interested, and there's a lot of people who feel... And there's a lot of, there's a lot of people who are interested, and there's a lot of people who feel sometimes that they're not informed enough. So we're really grateful, and I think this is a great resource to put in front of the public. Thank you, Counselor.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Nemo. Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you. Let's see, nobody else? We'll go back up in order, counselors. That's okay, unless Counselor wants to take one other item out of order. Actually, there's a document that I'd like to take out of order, Counselor. Document twenty-seven dash thirteen.
So moved?
Ready, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Document twenty-seven, proposed amendment to zoning ordinance, rezoning eighty-four East Hable Street from R-two residential zone to B-one to local business zone. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document twenty-seven, two thousand thirteen, notice hereby given the City Council, hold a public hearing Tuesday, April second, City Council Chambers, two hundred Common Street, at seven P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to Chapter Twenty-Nine of the revised ordinances for the city of Lawrence by amending Section Twenty-Nine-eleven to allow for the use in R-two or R-two A, and R-three or R-four zoning districts by special permit with a state plan review, excuse me, a site plan review. Section Twenty-nine-twenty-three would further be amended by adding supplemental regulations. As posted, office use with special permit and site plan review for such districts. Use table also would further be amended. A copy of the proposed zoning ordinance amendment and the use table amended may be viewed and was made available for examination and copying upon request, the Office of City Clerk, to on the Common Street during business days between eight-thirty A.M. and four-thirty P.M. Persons wishing to be heard on this matter shall be afforded the opportunity as advertised on March twenty-second.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody wish to be heard? No, public hearing is now closed. Counselor, what's your pledge?
Motion to approve.
Oh, here's a second. Any discussion?
Discussion?
Discussion. Counselor Burnell?
When we talked about this at the subcommittee level, basically, we're amending the use table. Just to clarify, we are not rezoning that specific site from an R-two to a B-one. We're amending the use table to get the same effect at that location through different means. And I like the solution that was proposed by the Planning Office, and that was really creative. One thing I understood to be the case, but it wasn't clear when the clerk just read the public notice, so I just want to make sure. This would allow office use in R-two, R-three, or R-four by special permit, and the specific caveat was that the special permit does not run with the land. The special permit is given to the permit holder, and upon their sale of the property, any new owner in the future would have to obtain their own special permit, which was also one of the caveats that really made it appealing. And I just want to make sure that the final use table is going to reflect that aspect, that the special permit does not run with the land. It goes to the owner. Yes, great. Right here, it does state, "Special permit will run with the person and not the entity seeking the relief, and not with the land." So, perfect. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Counselor Toomey?
I'd like to thank Counselor Burnell for that, because that's kind of important, that people can understand that when these ordinance go into effect, some people might not understand what they're all about, so I think clarification was very good on this. I really do appreciate that. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Anybody else? There's a motion on the table. It's been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Motion to waive the thirty days on that?
So moved?
There's a motion on the table to waive the thirty days, Grace Perry. It's been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. I believe there's one more document that I'd like to take out of order. It's document thirty, counselors. Looking for a motion to take document thirty out of order?
So moved?
Ready, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. Document thirty, proposed amendment to zoning ordinance, Section Five, billboards. Item was submitted by Daniel A. McCarthy, Land Use Planner. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document number thirty. Number thirty of two thousand thirteen, notice is hereby given the City Council, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April second, two thousand thirteen, in Council Chambers, two hundred Common Street, at seven P.M. Purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city of Lawrence, to be amended by adding the following new Section Five or subsection five to be inserted in proper numerical order to Section Twenty-nine dash twenty-G permitted signs. A description of the ordinance was published in the news media, outlining the details of the amendment, and further by deleting a portion of Section Twenty-nine-eleven of Municipal Code, the use table referencing the older ordinance and striking that. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity and published on March twenty-second.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody wish to be heard? Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, the name's Dick Russell, thirty-four Cross Street. Quick question about this. Does this have any effect on me posting any political signs on the face of my house?
No. No.
No?
Billboards. This is only billboards.
Just billboards? Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Public hearing is now closed. Counselor, what's your pledge?
Motion to approve.
Oh, here's a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion?
Counselor Vice Chair Rivera?
Can you just have the Land Use Planner just come up for a second?
Sure. Name and address for the record, please, Mr. McCarthy.
Good evening. Daniel McCarthy, two twenty-five Essex Street.
What's the, um, does this allow any new billboards within the city? Or is it, this is just along the highways?
It is two purposes for it. One, it does allow some, very limited. We made an exception in there for it to allow permitting for billboards on municipal lands, specifically by the city, within a hundred thousand feet of the highway. And this is to, for the potential to, for the city to enter into a contract with a company and get some revenue, and also to be able to advertise things about the city, events happening at, and we're thinking about, you know, within the area of the HA district, which is near the Showcase Cinema, and so that's, the city's been looking at that. Otherwise, billboards will not be permitted, new billboards will not be permitted, and the rest of the regulations are to regulate the billboards which are existing.
So you're not going to put one up at the DPOB yard?
No.
That'd be effective.
It's limits.
Because that's city land.
It limits it with a thousand feet of the highway.
Is there a cap on how many we can do?
Excuse me?
Is there a cap?
On the number?
Yeah.
Not specifically, no.
Counselor Burnell?
Are you done? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just.
Sorry. I was of the understanding that this ordinance would permit billboards only on municipal properties and only in the Highway Access District. Is that?
Correct.
Because when I'm reading this, it says slightly, it says, "Billboards are permitted use on all municipal property, period."
That should have been corrected.
Okay.
It should say.
Okay, you're right. I got a different version.
Probably within a thousand feet of an interstate highway.
And special permits are required in the Highway Access District?
Correct.
Even for the municipality, the special permission?
Yes, for the municipality. Anything, it's, the municipal property is one thing, the Highway Access is one section. And part of the reasoning for that is this state land in the Highway Access District, that the city might be able to work with the state in erecting something. Use state land, and we'd still be able to profit from it.
My confusion is just coming from, if a private property owner has land in the Highway Access District, can they throw up a billboard under this ordinance with a special permit?
They could request a special permit.
So this doesn't, just saying that the city or the, private property owners in the Highway Access District could put up a billboard also?
Correct, but it could be denied. It would be, you know, I can't say it would be denied, but, you know, the purpose of this is to limit it, so.
And there are regulations under the state law that you can only have so many per, foot or whatever, like?
Correct.
The car traveling can only go by so many a minute or what?
Yes, and it's in, and I believe it's like the quarter mile, so if the city erects one where we'd like to, that would probably eliminate all further billboards along the highway.
Where you, I'm sorry.
Because there's only one, there's only one prime piece of area that would be for the city. That would be, as I said, in the Highway Access District, near the high school, near the Veterans Stadium. And there's several locations of city property along there that could be chosen. But once we choose one, that would probably eliminate any further billboard signage going up.
Counselor Yerlson?
I guess I'm not. It's, "Billboards are permitted use in, on all municipal property within a thousand feet of an interstate highway. Special permits are required in a Highway Access District." If I have land elsewhere in the city, and I petition the zoning board for relief, for a special permit, is it, it's my understanding that the zoning board has to deny the permit, because it's outside the thousand feet, and it's not a Highway Access District?
You wouldn't even be allowed to petition them, because it's not a permitted use. It wouldn't be allowed at all. You couldn't even petition for that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Anybody else? Counselor LaPlante and Counselor Toomey?
Every time we do these, we're trying to correct the harm. Can you just briefly describe what the harm is? And I think I got a fundamental misunderstanding what the correction is. So what is the harm that we're looking to correct with this ordinance?
The, our discussions with, have mainly been with Clear Channel, which is the, owns ninety-nine percent of the signage in the city. And the discussions we've had in the past were, if the opportunity developed for the city to place a billboard sign along the highway, they would be willing to negotiate with us to eliminate a number of ISAR-type of billboards, the old-fashioned type, paper billboards, in the inner city, at the selection of the city. So we could go through and maybe eliminate twenty or thirty ISARs in the city. We also set up regulations through this that says if these, these have to be, the boards have to be maintained. If they're not, then we'll consider them abandoned, remove them. We're looking for bonds for fixing them and for other materials and such. So what we want to do is regulate the ones that we have here, don't put any further ones in. And in our negotiations to put some up, a single one for Highway Access District, that we would eliminate a number of inner-city ones that are real blights. And like I said, as I said, the Clear Channel's made, indicated that that would be at the discretion of the city. We'd be free to choose those and maybe have some type of public forum to discuss which ones are the most, you know, the ones that we want to go to most.
So if we're going to go ahead and allow this to go forward, and if a billboard is erected on municipal property within a thousand feet of interstate highway, will the city accrue any revenues?
We would, absolutely.
What are we looking at? Just, can you give me an idea of what's the market rate right now for that?
I don't know. I know it's based upon, I know it's based upon the number of car trips, so it depends during the season, but it'd be well over a hundred thousand dollars a year.
So the city would be able to take in in excess of over a hundred thousand dollars a year if we were, and you were mentioning earlier, someplace near the Veterans Memorial Stadium, in that part, which is actually my district. So you're looking to put something there, and in that location, you would think that's how much money you would bring in?
It's based, yeah, it's based upon the number of cars that travel on four ninety-five that would see it. So as the traffic goes up, we make more money.
So we're only looking at one, essentially, bringing one up, and that's in that particular area, which, once you have one, you're not going to be able to build any more or erect any more near the highway. Is that my understanding with your discussion with the Counselor from Mount Vernon? Because I was under, maybe clarify that. I was under the impression that there's only so many that you can put within a certain?
Correct.
Space. So if you put one there, I mean, we already have several right now on four ninety-five, for example.
Yeah, there's two right now that would qualify as billboards, and those are, those would eliminate, you know, the one at Commonwealth Motors and the one at Sal's, are two of them, and those would eliminate anything within those distances, so.
When you said eliminate, you mean they're going to take those down?
No. You couldn't put up anything within the proximity of those because of state regulations.
And how quickly can you get to us a list of those blighted billboards that are going to be taken down?
I could request that from Clear Channel, the inventory. I'm sure they have it all, because, you know, they're all contracts. I could probably get that fairly quickly.
And how quickly will they take those things down once we do this?
That hasn't been discussed. It's just.
Not even within a ballpark, within six months a year?
I would expect them to come down before the new one's up.
Thank you, Council President.
Counselor Toomey?
Thank you, Mr. President. As I read this, Mr. McCarthy, it says he had billboards in it, has excluded in all these areas. That means you cannot put up a billboard in these areas, right, these zoning districts?
Correct.
But they are permitted in use on all municipal properties within a thousand feet of an interstate highway. If they're nine hundred feet from an interstate highway, they cannot put up a billboard. Is that right?
Excuse me?
It has to be over a thousand feet from a, from a.
Has to be within a thousand feet.
Within a thousand.
Can't be more than a thousand feet.
Can't be more than a thousand feet.
Correct.
In other words, they can put up a billboard at nine hundred, nine hundred feet between, from a distance from a highway?
Yeah.
And special permits are required in HA districts. What's the HA district?
HA district is the, is a small area around the intersection of one fourteen and four ninety-five.
Highway access. So all these other zoning areas, they cannot put up billboards?
Correct.
At all?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? There's a motion on the table. It's been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
I'll go back up in order, counselors. Document two twenty-six dash eleven, illegal dumping home rule petition amendment. The item was submitted by Counselor LaPlante. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Gone to notice so many times. Here it is. Document two twenty-six of two thousand eleven. Notice is hereby given the City Council, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April second, two thousand thirteen, in Council Chambers, two hundred Common Street, at seven P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the ordinances for the city of Lawrence by proposing a home rule petition concerning the following: to provide program for enforcement against the illegal dumping within the city limits, and to establish fines and other penalties for illegal dumping and a method of collecting said fines and penalties. Said petition shall contain such further additional support sections for further, to further support the petition as stated. A home rule petition shall be subject to the applicable provisions of Article eighty-nine, of Article Two of the Amendments of the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the Lawrence City Charter, and any other lawful provisions governing home rule petitions in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. A complete and unabridged copy of the proposed petition, as referenced in the advertisement, were made available for public examination, copying, and review at the Office of the City Clerk during business hours, eight-thirty A.M. to four-thirty P.M. Persons wishing to be heard on the matter shall be afforded the opportunity published on March twenty-second.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody wish to be heard? Public hearing is now closed. Counselor, what's your pledge?
Counselor President, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we, I think somebody wants to speak on the public hearing, so.
Oh, you would? I already closed it, but that's fine. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, counselors. My name is Arthur Bryan. I live at twenty-three Tudor Avenue in Lawrence. I just want to say that I think this is a wonderful thing that you're doing, trying to clean up our city. Whenever we have a conversation about the city of Lawrence, this topic of illegal dumping garbage in the streets seems to always come up. And to see that you're trying to do something about it is really admirable, and I hope it's extremely successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor LaPlante?
Yep, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this document.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Discussion?
Discussion. Counselor LaPlante?
Pretty quickly, this is a bit of background. This is a document that we approved unanimously two years ago. It went up to the State House. It's a, it's a home rule petition. So it was sent to the State House with a delegation in support of it, and the mayor in support of it. But it died on committee at the, at the State House. Apparently, the House Ways and Means Committee had some recommendations of House to improve the document that they believe would make it more palatable for passage. And so what we see here in front of us today is a minor tweaking of the original. The tweak is very simple. It went down from a ten-thousand-dollar maximum fine down to a five-thousand-dollar maximum fine. It's still a good piece of legislation. Ten would have been better, but having said that, I don't want the perfectly get in the way of the good. So this is, as the previous speaker said, an important initiative.
So this is, as, as the previous speaker said, an important initiative to, and what we'll do is that if we catch somebody who's doing some illegal dumping, and our DPDW then is going ahead and cleaning up whatever properties or whatever that's been dumped, we can then go ahead and then cite the individual who is doing the dumping up to three times the amount that that individual cost the City of Lawrence to go ahead and do that dumping, whether it's personnel, gas, truck, time, tipping fees, whatever it is, up to five thousand dollars, more than I think the three hundred and fifty thou, no, I'm sorry, three hundred and fifty dollars that is the fine currently. So this is a more meaningful fine. And then what happens with the money that's accrued, that money, each dollar that, that the city recoups, goes ahead and stays in a dedicated account that's going to continue to work on illegal dumping, whether it's personnel on illegal dumping, whether it's equipment, more cameras, whatever it is that's going to take for us to be successful and get a better handle on illegal dumping, this is going to be exclusively, in exclusive domain of that, of those monies. So I'm hopeful that with the Council President, who's also state rep, if he can be helpful in shepherding this bill through the proper committees in the State House, I'm, I'm hopeful that will be more successful this year than we were last. So I hope that, and that you all can support it once more this year.
Anybody else? Counselor Toomey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a basic question. It says here, "The city shall establish and maintain a disposal enforcement fund." Now, there's been many times when different funds have been designated for certain amounts of money, and somehow or other, maybe down the line someplace, the city finds a way of working its way into it. Is there some way where this can be set up such that it isn't somewhat similar to an enterprise fund?
And that's something that we should look into in the future, trying to set it up as an enterprise fund, more around that.
Because to me, to me, the enterprise funds cannot be touched.
Correct.
But just putting the name on a fund like that and leave it open to, to attract some fingers into it.
Something that we should look into in the future to do there.
Thank you.
Counselor LaPlante?
Section six of this, of this act actually does discuss that specifically. Keep in mind, this is not only going to be a local law, it's going to be a state law. This is a home rule petition. So they, so if whatever other agency is looking, or even within the DPDW is looking to use this money in access for anything outside of the, the illegal dumping arena, that would be illegal. They would not be able to do that. So, and I know that we're, we have Mark Iannello here who's going to, he's very by the book on these things, and, you know, we'll, with every confidence that upon passage that, that this will be there. But it doesn't mitigate the fact that we should still be vigilant and working toward making sure that when the budget comes down, that we see that line item and that we see where that money is being spent on. So the Counselor's point is well taken.
Anybody else? This motion on the table has been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document two ninety-two, operation of tackling livery vehicles in Lawrence. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document two ninety-two of two thousand and twelve. Notice is hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April second, two thousand and thirteen, in Council Chambers at seven P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances. To be amended by deleting the following sentence and sentences from section five, point four-eight, point nine-three-zero of the Municipal Code, entitled Authorization to Arrest and Seize Evidence. Sentence is spelled out in paragraph, in fact, is spelled out in full in the advertisement published on March twenty-second.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody wish to be heard? No, public hearing is now closed. Counselor, worship pledge.
Motion to approve.
Right here, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document three twenty-five, handicap parking, Jackson Street near Canal, actually, Counselor can, on the last order that we just passed, can we waive the thirty days on that?
Make a motion to waive the thirty days.
Right here, second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you, Counselors. Next item on the agenda is document three twenty-five, handicap parking, Jackson, Jackson Street near Canal Street. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document three twenty-five, two thousand and twelve. Notice is hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April second, at seven P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the City of Lawrence. To be amended by adding and following new paragraph to the Municipal Code concerning handicap parking, describing the location and amending it according to the police officer's report, to be Methuen Streets, outside from a point of one hundred and sixty-five feet easterly of the intersection of Appleton Street to a point of one hundred and eighty-five feet easterly of the intersection of Appleton Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on March twenty-second.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody wish to be heard? No, public hearing is now closed. Counselor, worship pledge.
Motion to approve with a waiver, a waiver of the thirty days.
Second.
Right here, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document fifty-four, appropriation transfer from free cash to general fund for veteran benefits. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document fifty-four of two thousand and thirteen. Notice is hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April second, two thousand and thirteen, in Council Chambers, two hundred Common Street, at seven P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the approval for proposed appropriation in the amount of three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from free cash reserves to the general fund veterans' benefits, to allow for benefits to be available to veterans eligible to receive, receive such funds. A copy of all documents, information concerning the proposed appropriation are available for viewing, copying, inspection, and the office of the City Clerk, two hundred Common Street, during business hours eight thirty A.M. to four thirty P.M. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity published on March twenty-second.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody wish to be heard? No, public hearing is now closed. Counselor, worship pledge.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion, Counsel Vice Chair Rivera.
Thank you, Counsel President. This item was before the Budget and Finance Committee. We, we voted unanimously to send this up with favorable recommendation before, but we just wanted to make sure that folks noted in your packet, you have two documents that are very important to this matter. And that's, one is the veterans' benefits paid from July twelfth, July two thousand and twelve to February two thousand and thirteen. It delineates clearly how much we've spent. And then it also talks about the, the other page is the City of Lawrence Schedule of Free Cash and how much of that money will be taken out of that if we do this today. I believe that puts the free cash that was once six point six million to four point six million. But again, this is to, to beef up the, the veterans' benefits and an amount I think we owe the veterans of this community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Discussion. Anybody else? Counselor LaPlante?
Could I ask Mr. Melendez to come forward, please?
Sure, is he here?
He sure is.
Oh. Mr. Melendez, name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, members of the council. Jamie Melendez, Director of Veteran Services, Drake Street, Lawrence, Mass.
Thank you, Mr. Melendez, and thank you for coming this evening and your work on behalf of our city's veterans. I'm reading the, the memo that was written from Mr. Iannello to, to the clerk, saying that the, there's a significant increase in veterans' benefits that need to be spent. Can you explain why all of a sudden that we're, we're seeing an increase in the amount of benefits that needed to, that we need to provide for our veterans?
As to the reason why, the only thing I could say is I've, I've established and incorporated a word-of-mouth, if you will, outreach system. So I'm having my veterans speak to their veterans, their friends. My intent here is basically to ensure that every veteran who is eligible and lives in the City of Lawrence is receiving the benefits that they so, that they deserve. So what I've done up to, up to date now with the staff of one that I have is created an outreach through word-of-mouth. So I am having a lot of people come in just to see, just to go through the intake process and to see if they're eligible. Now, out of those individuals that I have come in, about fifty percent are finding out that they are eligible. So I, that's what I would relate the increase to.
And what is it, what is the one significant item out of all the veterans', veterans' benefits that we offer, along with the state and federal government, that is the most, the benefit that's most readily or most utilized?
The number one benefit that I am utilizing here in the City of Lawrence is the chapter one fifteen benefit. Chapter one fifteen basically enables every eligible veteran to, to receive either financial, medical, educational, employment, and other types of benefits. Basically, the Financial Assistance Program, which is the chapter one fifteen. So that is the number one tool that I'm using. It, it actually takes about ninety percent of my time to manage that, that one benefit out of our, out of my office. So that is the number one budget, the, the number one thing that's affecting my budget is chapter one fifteen.
And my last question is, is I'm meeting constituents and I represent many veterans. What is the, what's the message that I should give to them? Maybe they're not aware of, of veterans' benefits. What's the message that you think that I, the City Council can provide to those who are veterans in my district?
That's a very good question, and again, it helps with my outreach. The number one thing that I would say is if you are the family member, the dependent, adult dependent who might have been physically or, or behaviorally challenged prior to the age of eighteen, you might be eligible for benefits. I urge them, come in, call me, sit down with me, go through the intake process. Again, it is a, a means test-driven assistance program. It is driven through poverty levels and, and employment. And obviously, we all know, as a gateway city, we see those types of people coming through here who could probably use that assistance. So what I would say to you is if you are in any way related to a veteran, please come see me by any means. You can call me, nine-seven-eight, six-two-zero, three-two-eight-two. I'm on the city website. You can email me, or you can visit my office, eight-thirty to four-thirty, which now I have a volunteer in there helping me, so I always have someone there.
And where's your office? I know where it is, but where's your office located?
Yes, for, um, my office is in the City Hall, suite two, in the basement. First door on your left when you come through the handicap parking.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Just to follow up, I think that that piece was really important to just reiterate, that, that young or old, relative of, if you're, if you have that service, you should come down and just have a conversation.
Yes.
Because I think that sometimes folks think they're not, they don't qualify for it, but it's important to go down and have the conversation anyway, just to make sure you're covered. You may not have an effect today, but you may have a, an effect down the line. But, you know, if you're a veteran in this community, you should come down and see Jamie and go through that process.
Thank you, Counsel. That's absolutely correct.
That's important. Thank you.
Anybody else? Counselor Toomey?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's just, I think it's very important for people to know that this is a function that has to be funded, definitely has to be funded by the city. Although we do receive what?
Seventy-five percent of the refund?
That's correct. The state does provide seventy-five percent of what the city pays out to our veterans in return. Now, that is in arrears about two years, but we do receive that back.
And we are required by law to, to.
That is correct, by Massachusetts general law.
Either way.
Yes, it is required.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Anybody else?
Mr. Melendez, I just want to thank you for all the reach out that you do out there in increasing that number higher, because there's people out there that don't know they, they have these benefits available to them. If anybody knows out there, a veteran, have them see you.
Yes, please.
That's what I think we should be telling people. Come and sit down with you, see what's available for them. And I, and I love what you're doing, reaching out to people. You're not just there downstairs, you're going out, knocking on doors, going to every corner of the city, trying to reach out to them, which is remarkable. Thank you for your job and your dedication.
Thank you, sir.
This motion on the table has been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document fifty-five, appropriation orders, authorization to borrow three million dollars to repair some of the issues that went on in the Gilmet School. Mr. Clerk, read the notice, please.
Document fifty-five, two thousand and thirteen. Notice is hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April second, two thousand and thirteen, in Council Chambers, two hundred Common Street, at seven P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a proposed loan order for state-qualified school bonds in the amount of three million dollars to be appropriated to pay costs of remodeling and reconstruction and extraordinary repairs required of the Gilmet Elementary and Middle School, citing the requirements under chapter forty-four, section seven, parentheses, three A of Massachusetts General Laws, and to also allow for state-qualified refunding of bonds under chapter forty-four, section twenty-one, as published. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on March twenty-second.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody wish to be heard? No? Public hearing is now closed. Counselor, worship pledge.
Motion to approve with an amendment to the amount.
What's the amendment, Counselor Vice Chair Rivera?
The amendment is to instead of three million, two point five.
Second.
Right here, second, second. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Counselor, Counsel Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item is a, this is a one that started when we, when I first came on the council and you've been with us for a little while. But just again, I'd like to point out the documents that are in, that are in your packet that are important, this item. You have a document that says the Schedule of Costs incurred for Gilmet School through March eleventh, two thousand and thirteen. And that document just basically outlines that to date, we've spent or encumbered three million, three and a half million dollars, roughly. That'll be helpful. Again, this, this document, Schedule of Costs incurred for Gilmet School through March eleventh, two thousand and thirteen, says that we've expended or encumbered three point five-two-five million dollars so far in the Gilmet School. Some of it has been on legal fees, some of it has been on, encumbered to pay services rendered. More importantly, we're into this three and a half million dollars. The idea is that we will also be going after the, the liable parties to get this money back. What we have, that's what we've done to date. What we have in front of us is three million dollars to fix the problem. It's three hundred, three million dollars to, I'm sorry, two point five billion to be borrowed to fix the problem. Again, monies that we will then go after the people liable for to recoup. We, we had two meetings in consecutive sessions to talk with the lawyers about strategy, which is not something we can do in public because it'll hurt our ability to actually get that money back. But they know that they're on, their timeline is tight. They know that we're not in any mood to be, to give more free cash out, to fight this thing. They need to get to it rapidly. But I think that if we, again, this is impacting our ability to borrow, if we let them borrow the two point five million to fix it, and we continue to, to support the, the attorneys on hand, that we could see the end of this and then also start recuperating some of the money. So I would encourage Counselors to support it. The superintendent, the deputy superintendent's here, the attorney's here, Mr. Iannello's here, DPDW director, all the people involved in this matter are present for questions about the matter.
Counsel, Counsel LaPlante?
Thank you. I have a quick question. Are we also going to attach legal fees to that?
I believe so.
So that it's all going to be included?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Actually, legal fees would not be part of this bond authorization.
Mr. Iannello, name and address for the record. I know we all know you. I know we all know you.
Yes, Mark Iannello, fifteen Federal Street, Newburyport. The, uh, this bond authorization is to repair the building. Legal fees are not part of capital improvements.
Well, just to, when we go after them to try and get our money back...
That's what she meant.
That's what I meant. Are, are those legal fees going to be attached to the final number? Because I don't think we should, we, the city, should be liable for, we're already giving, letting them borrow the money, so, and if we're going to have to go after them, we might as well attach the legal fees that are, it's going to cost us to get that money back.
Well, the bond authorization before you is, indicates it's to repair for extraordinary repairs and remodeling to a building.
Point of information?
So it's a standard, it's a standard order. And, and, and included in the order is also a clarification that, I'll just read it, "The total amount authorized to be borrowed by this order shall be reduced to the extent of any judgments received by the city on account of litigation involving the Gilmet Elementary School," or any grants or gifts.
Point of information, Counselor Rivera?
Yeah, I think that there's the matter before us, but there's the question that the council had, which was, when we do bring suit, we're going to go after to get the money we spend on legal fees.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Counselor LaPlante and Counselor Toomey? So, we just, there was an amendment just offered that the, the author accepted for bringing the number down from three million to two point five. Can I get an explanation as to why we're reducing the bond authorization by a half million dollars?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I'm glad to answer the question. The, the ask was for three million. During the testimony, they said it could have been as low as one and a half and as high as two and a half. We went and did a walkthrough of the, of the facility. Counselor Vasquez was not here present, had some serious concerns about the total amount being bonded, as did I. And we felt, thought that two point five is a, a fair enough number. We, the way that the bidding process happens, we just didn't want the three million to have, to be out at the top of the, of this order. We felt like two and a half was a good number, and talked with Counselor Vasquez and, and the group after going through the walkthrough.
I just thank you.
They don't have, I'm sorry, they don't have a hard number.
As to how much it's going to cost to fix it, there's no hard number. So we're just, we're throwing out a two and a half million, and it's a huge range, you just mentioned to me. So I just, I, how am I supposed to be confident that we're bonding the right amount of money?
If I could explain, I think I could explain our, our strategy here, and that is, we have a, an unknown factor, a number of things that have to be repaired in the building. We do not, we have to put that out to bid to come up with a number. We can't go out to bid until we have funds to award the bid. And, and this bond authorization is how we begin the process. So we, we come up with an estimate of what we think we may need, and we have to have an estimate that's a little higher than what we think we need in case the bids come in higher. Because if we do authorize two and a half million, or two million, or three million, or any number, and then we put this out to bid and the bids come in at three and a half million, I've got to come back before the council and do a bond authorization again. So we're fairly comfortable that the costs are probably going to be anywhere from one and a half to two million, maybe two and a half million. But I feel safer requesting an authorization of three million. The authorization of three million is only a bond authorization. It does not mean we're spending the three million. The three million will, or the authorization to repair this building, we will only spend what it needs to, to be repaired. But I understand the council's concern if they want to, I, I'm not so sure two and a half million will be enough. We haven't bid this project. It won't be bid until, I believe the bids are due May fifteenth. So there's a bid specifications that have been prepared. We won't know until May fifteenth whether three million is, is the proper number. But we, we, our estimates are that it should be below that number. That's why we came up with the three million.
I just want to take my brief time here to just express my outrage that this, we're taking a lot of oxygen of time and a lot of money, and maybe we'll get it back, maybe we won't. And we're, we have so many needs in the city, but yet we're going to be putting up front through this bond authorization more money until the Gilmet School because of shoddy workmanship that was done years ago. And who's going to ultimately pay for all that shoddy workmanship? Well, in the short term, we know it's going to be our citizens and our residents. And we also know that there's, I see a DPW director here, I see a fire chief here, a library director was here earlier. I know that there's plenty of departments that could use that kind of money to, to give proper services to the city of Lawrence. And I'm not blaming you for this. I'm expressing my outrage that we've got, we're seeking time and money and effort into what should never have been. We should not be, we should never be put in this situation, we put those hard-earned taxpayers' dollars to put into those schools, and don't forget about, obviously, the risk that we put these schoolchildren in as well. I mean, let's not forget about that for a certain amount of time, and that we had to force them out. And then we had a fire drill essentially to try to find where we're locating these kids, and we had to work with the archdiocese to try to find a place, Our Lady Good Council, the old Sandy Gus and School, maybe some other places. It's just crazy. So what I don't want to do is, we're going to run through this, we're probably going to vote for this tonight, but I, but we need to continue to be outraged at this process and be outraged that we're being asked again because of shoddy workmanship that we've got to put this money forward. So I just needed to express that, that, that real, real anger toward it.
Just, just on that note, can you explain, I know the difference, but can you explain to the public what the difference is, us using borrowing money versus using the money that we have in the general fund or the rainy day fund? So they know, because, you know, there's a mentality out there that, yeah, we have five million dollars in our rainy day fund. Why can't we use that money? Why are we borrowing money? Can you explain, so we could know why you're requesting us to?
Yes.
And how this is going to affect our bond rating or credit rating?
Well, actually, if we were to use free cash, that would affect our, our reserves, that would affect our bond rating. Right now, we can borrow at a very low interest rate, and this is something that is, it's a, it's a capital repair, if you will, or to fix this building so the children can get back into that school and, and have a, have it the way it should be, whereas now it's, it's patched. We have a little PowerPoint presentation with nine slides. If you, if you allow me to, to put it in, we might be able to explain the project a little better and show a few pictures particularly to the audience. But the, the reason why we would borrow for something like this is because we can, and it'll be a very low interest rate. We have a very high, you know...
Is that because, because our credit rating is higher? Is that the reason why we're getting a lower interest rate?
You know, these, we're asking in this bond order that these become our state-qualified bonds, which means that the bondholders would get paid out of our cherry sheet distributions or our quarterly distributions. So we get basically the state's bond rating when we issue these bonds. So it's, it's a very low cost. Again, we hope to recoup all of these costs, including interest and including legal fees and everything else. That's our expectation. But, you know, the prudent thing to do today is, is to, is to approve a bond authorization, get the project done, fix the school, get it back so the children can be back in the school, and, and then hopefully the, we'll, we'll recoup some of these funds, if not all of them.
And then my next question will be to Attorney Bodie. What is the chances of us recouping this, this money back?
I don't want to get into too much detail regarding, you know, the litigation itself, but we feel very confident that we're going to get money back. I'll just leave it at that.
Three, five?
The, the amount's always, you know, we're going for the most we can get. So we're going to look at all of our damages and include consequential damages and add everything up, and that's our demand. And, you know, we're, we're looking to get a number that's as close to the highest number we can. That's, I mean, that's the process. To give you an exact number would be pure speculation at this point, but we're, we're very confident, I'll just leave that, we're very confident in our case, in our claims, and as the case has proceeded, because there is litigation involved, as it has proceeded to this point, it's all been what we expect and favorable to our strategy.
When do you anticipate that we'll have to settle?
You know, that, that, again, that's like saying, when are you going to dance, when are you and I going to dance together? You know, it depends. If I'm willing to dance and you are...
Never going to happen.
It could be now. Yeah, but, but the reality... But, um...
I thought he was getting up to dance with him.
Yeah, you know, it, these things, these settlements come about as a result sometimes of exerting enough legal pressure that it becomes more beneficial financially and otherwise to discuss settlement than to litigate. So it's difficult to say. Again, I'm happy to discuss this with you in, in detail, perhaps in another forum, but at this point, everything is going according to plan, and we're confident, and we are expecting a, a favorable resolution. I'll just leave it at that.
One year, two years?
A case in court can take several years, Counselor. We're hoping it will be less than that.
Well, there's two point five we're borrowing here. We wanted to see if we're going to recoup this money anytime soon.
I wish I had a crystal ball, because I'd be picking up numbers at the lottery as well, as giving you predictions on this stuff.
Isn't your high priority?
This is a very high priority. It's been a high priority, not only because of how it's been assigned in the city attorney's office, but you, this council, has said that it's a high priority. That's why you, we wanted to retain experienced outside counsel, and we've done that. So it's, you know, it's not something that languishes in the city attorney's office. It's being handled. It's, it's advanced daily. We're in constant communication, as we were today, on the strategy of this case earlier today. So it is priority, because you've made it so, so have we.
I just want to be clear.
Point of information, Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to be clear, when we authorize this and they spend up to whatever number they spend, we're going to be into it for six million. So we're going to be looking to get six million back.
And we'll be looking to get that back, yes. All the damages, all the direct damages, all the consequential damages are numbers that we're looking to recover. Absolutely. Including attorney's fees for that matter, just so you're aware.
Counselor Toomey, I know you, you... Counselor Reyes? Then Counselor Toomey?
I just have a quick question for whoever can answer that. Who is going to be responsible just to follow up with the new company? Who's going to be day by day, you know, just to make sure that they are doing the right thing? Who are the ones going to be?
The, currently, there's David Square Architects is the architect. Mike Morley's been assigned as the clerk of the works.
Name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, John McDonald, I'm sorry. John McDonald with Nelson Mullins in Boston One Post Office Square.
I apologize, Counsel. This is our outside counsel. He is representing us in the claims that is, that are being brought both for the Gilmet School as well as the High School.
I apologize. I had appeared a couple of times before the subcommittee and just...
Sorry about that, Counselor Reyes.
So in other words, someone is going to be just kind of supervising who, you know, whatever they are doing at this point. It's not going to be happening like it happened a couple of years ago, because the fact is, I know, this school has been built thirteen years ago, if I'm not mistaken.
Right? Yeah, the school was completed in, in two thousand two. It was occupied in two thousand one. The auditorium and the gymnasium were finished in two thousand two. At this point, David Square Architects has been assigned as the architect to prepare the plans and the project manual and the specifications for the remedial and reconstruction work. And Mike Morley's been assigned as the clerk of the works. David Square Architects will maintain an ongoing presence during the course of the project. It's intended that the project would start when the kids get out of school in June and then is completed by mid-August, so that everything is done before the children go back to school.
Counselor Toomey, then Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I remember correctly, at our subcommittee meeting, we did approve with a positive recommendation a three million dollar loan, a three million dollar bond. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. Now, this, this bond, when all these bids come in, if it's, if it's two point seven five million, this is what you're going to borrow.
We're only going to borrow what we need to expect.
You just want authorization to go up to three million if need be. That's all you want.
That's correct. The three million is authorization up to that amount.
It doesn't mean you're going to borrow that much.
If I, if I could maybe clarify just a little bit, we're going to award a contract, and the contract is going to go to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. That amount, the lowest amount, and it may not be the lowest amount bid, but it's the one who's complied with the bid requirements and so forth. That contract is what will be bonded, that amount. So if it's two point seven five, the bond will be two point seven five, it won't be three million.
Right, you just want authorization to go up to three million in cases necessary.
That's correct.
That's all.
That's correct, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Elmonte?
Now, I know that this is for the borrowing of the bond, but when we have the children moved from the schools and we borrow these other buildings and stuff like that, did we rent any of these other buildings or monies that we spent on that? Are they going to get tagged on to this? The buses that we used, custodians that we used to clean the schools?
All of that's included in the claim.
So all of that will be included in there? Are we going to get like a sheet that's going to tell us?
That was presented at a budget finance committee. It's included in the, we've expended roughly three point five million, as Counselor Rivera mentioned.
Point of information, behind the costs of incurred Gilmet School, there's actually a list of that stuff provided by the school department. It says Gilmet School costs, Lawrence Public Schools, and it has Saturday sessions and moving, ceiling tile replacement, transportation.
Okay. Just want to make sure everything's tagged on so that we are reimbursed for everything that we spent.
There's actually a second component to the bond authorization, and that is the second order is just if we do, are allowed to issue these bonds, or any other bonds we have outstanding, that we would authorize us also to refund those bonds if there's ever a lower interest rate opportunity. So I just wanted to just clarify, there's two actual votes here, but it's all related to three, three million or two and a half million bond authorization.
So do you need us, question through you, Mr. President? So do you need us to amend that, that motion to add that, the...
No, it's part of the original...
Or do a second?
Yeah, I, I, I think, I'll refer to, right, I'll refer to Clerk Maloney on this one, but I believe there are two orders here. Do you need to take one vote for both or take them separately? We might just want to take a separate vote, just to clarify.
Can you, can you repeat those two orders?
It's in the packet, the, I think that's what the clerk just read a moment ago, but the, there's a, an order to borrow under state-qualified bonds, and then there's an order to, to, to issue state-qualified refunding bonds. And, and what it states is that, that in order to reduce the interest costs, the treasurer of the approval of the mayor is authorized to provide for the sale and issuance of refunding bonds under general law, chapter forty-four, section twenty-one A, at one time or from time to time, to refund all or portion of the remaining principal and interest, redemption, premium and interest on any of the city's general obligation bonds, outstanding as of the date of this vote, and to pay all, all other costs incidentally related thereto. In addition, the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the appropriate officials to come with a mass to qualify under forty-four A of the general laws and all bonds of the city authorized to be borrowed pursuant to this loan order and any other bonds in the city that have been authorized but not yet issued as of date hereof, and to provide such informational, information and execute such documents as such officials of the Commonwealth may require in connection therewith.
Thank you. So what these two...
Right now, the first, your first...
The order is...
Can you, can you repeat the motion, Mr. Clerk, please? I know this motion already has been seconded.
The motion presented by Counsel Vice President Rivera with amendment of two point five million was for approval. At this point, it's not clear whether it's the both bond orders or...
It was for the same. Let's take two separate, just, just to, just to be on the safe side.
And seconded by Counsel Aquino. I'll mark it as first.
Any other more discussion? No? Some motion, Counsel Toomey?
It's just that I'm not in favor of the two and a half million. I'm in favor of the three million dollar bond going forward. Just like to make that known.
Anybody else? There's a motion on the table. It's been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Roll call, please.
Counsel Vasquez marked absent. Counsel LaPlante?
Yes.
Counsel Toomey?
No.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Elmonte?
Yes.
Counsel Aquino?
Yes.
Counsel Bernal?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Rivera?
Yes.
And Counsel President Moran.
Chair, both, yes. Motion carries.
Second.
Make, make an order to, I mean, make, make a motion to pass the second order for the state-qualified refunding bonds to reduce interest costs and allowing the treasurer to do so. Do that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? None? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? You guys have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel.
Next item on the agenda. Let's see, let me make sure I'm, I'm not missing any. Next item on the agenda is committee reports, document two thirteen, Handicap Parkin, signed and ramped to be built at thirty-eight Warren Street, submitted by Nelson Vega. Item came out from the ordinance committee to order a public hearing. Madam Chair from the ordinance committee.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel President. At the Thursday, March twenty-first, meeting of the ordinance committee, we did move to send this up with a unanimous favorable recommendation to order a public hearing and it was pending the language from the Officer Scanlon and his memo is in our packages now with the appropriate language. So I do make that in the form of a motion.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Guys have it. Next item on the agenda is document thirty-two, vacant foreclosed property maintenance, amend present ordinance. This item came out from the ordinance committee to order a public hearing. Madam Chair from the ordinance.
Thank you, Counsel President. This item was at both the ordinance committee and at the housing committee and it was discussed at length at both levels. So I think most members have a good grasp of the issue. But basically, the Merrimack Valley Project had put forward a proposal asking the city to adopt a ordinance requiring lenders to maintain foreclosed properties in a better way. And basically, they put forth the current ordinances from the city of Springfield to use as a model. And it did come up from the ordinance subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to order a public hearing and any requisite language from the city attorney and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Guys have it. Next item on the agenda is document thirty-three, mediation of foreclosure of owner-occupied residential prop...
Counsel President, if you want, I can also read the committee report for the housing committee on that as well, that same document.
Sorry about that, I didn't see. Go ahead. Go ahead, Counsel LaPlante.
Okay, just, it's the same, it's the same document as you noticed. It was referred to both committees and the housing committee. Also, setting up the full council with favorable recommendation or a public hearing on document number thirty-two thirteen. I got it in form of a motion.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Guys have it. Next item on the agenda is document thirty-three, mediation of foreclosure of owners-occupied residential property. This item came out from the ordinance committee. Madam Chair from the ordinance committee.
Thanks, Counsel President. Again, at that Thursday, March twenty-first meeting, we did have a lengthy discussion with members from the Merrimack Valley Project with regard to a requirement that lenders foreclosing in the city of Lawrence be forced to or mandated to use a mediator in that foreclosure process with the property owner. And again, it was based on a ordinance that's been previously adopted by the city of Springfield and did come up from the ordinance committee with unanimous favorable recommendation to order a public hearing and any requisite language from the city attorney. And I do make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? I know Counsel LaPlante, that also came from the housing committee. The motion has been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Guys have it. Counsel LaPlante, you want to read the housing committee?
By unanimous vote, same item, vote in favor of sending the full council favorable recommendation to order a public hearing and make that in a form of a motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Guys have it. Document fifty-three, handicap parking, one sixty-five Ferry Street. Signing, signing came out from the ordinance committee to order a public hearing. Madam Chair from the ordinance.
Thank you, Counsel President. Again, at that March twenty-first ordinance committee meeting, the Officer Scanlon was there and he did make a recommendation that we accept the request for handicap parking at one sixty-five Ferry Street. The applicant did have the placard on file with the city and he did provide the measurements for the appropriate location and it came up from the subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation and I make that in the form of a motion.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Guys have it. Next item on the agenda is document fifty-seven, taxi and liberty licenses for two thousand and thirteen renewals. J.C. Transportation, Liberty Services, Merrimack Transportation, Five Star Express, Popular Taxi, Lawrence United Express and Go Caribe Transportation. Item was submitted by Lieutenant Sean Conway and it came from the ordinance committee. Madam Chair from the ordinance committee.
Thank you, Counsel President. At the Thursday, March twenty-first ordinance committee meeting, Lieutenant Conway from the Lawrence Police Department did appear before us on behalf of, on behalf of the taxi services for the city. He did present the renewal paperwork. Six taxi cab companies were fully compliant at that time and that was J.C. Transportation, Liberty Services, Merrimack Transportation, Five Star Express, Popular Taxi Company, Lawrence United Express and Co., excuse me, United Express, Go Caribe Transportation, the seventh one is a brand-new taxi company. They just bought their medallions from another former company and their paperwork was to be pending. Lieutenant Conway thought he would have it all filed with the clerk by or before tonight's meeting. So I just want to make sure that that is all submitted before I make the motion.
I thought I saw the owner of the company here earlier. He was here, right?
He was here.
It appears to be, but I'll, I'll check with, verify with the officer pending approval.
Yeah, so I guess just really pending verification by the clerk with Lieutenant Conway, I would make a favorable recommendation to renew all seven of those companies.
Second.
Any discussion? All, discussion, Counsel LaPlante?
Is, is the owner for Liberty Taxi here?
He was just here.
They're all, I know I saw them here earlier. They were all in the bag.
Is the owner for Popular Taxi here?
They were all here, but I guess they were outside, but...
And the reason why I'm calling the counsel president, and this is going to pass and I understand that, but once again, I need to express my frustration of some members of my district. I did this at the council, at the committee level and I wanted to express it at the full council level. It's the beeping of the horns drives some of the folks crazy. Like most of us, we have constituents who are either elderly or we have young families with babies or we have people who work in third shift. We have, we have a lot of different circumstances and, and when, when these cabs come in repeatedly and they lay on the horn and they honk repeatedly, it disrupts the quality of life of those families and individuals who are trying to have a quiet, peaceful enjoyment in their neighborhood and it disrupts that. And the two companies that I just asked if they were here, I wanted to just let them know once again, because I had been working with Sergeant Con, Sergeant Conway, Lieutenant Conway, on, on this matters. But I just wanted to see them and express to them directly the concerns that I have and the fact that they're not here right now, it disappoints me. But I'm going to say publicly right now that, that, that they need to conduct themselves in a more conscientious manner. Make a living, we need them in the city, got it. But they need to be more considerate of others as they go through this process.
One of the things you can do, Counsel LaPlante, is if you want, we can send them a correspondence to all these seven cab company on behalf of the city council to be more considerate, I mean, it's up to you if you want to do that.
I'd like to make a motion...
Send a letter from us.
I'd like to make a motion that we send a letter to each one of these cab companies reminding them, of course, of the, of the population they're looking to serve or there's other people who, who are looking for some more quiet enjoyment of their properties and ask them to be more considerate as they conduct their business. Make that in the form of a motion.
Counsel President, if you, if you would like to accept an amendment to that?
What is it?
I contacted myself, I have contacted this week a cab company who, two cab drivers were bickering, they had traffic lined up. They were talking about their, Sunday night, this happened Monday. And it, and it was, it was, I was a little upset because when I told them to move, I got the finger stuck out at me by one of the cab drivers. I called the cab company and I'm still waiting for one of the three owners to call me. It was the All-American, the one that has the American flag on it. The disrespect that, that happens from them is incredible, so, from some of them. I'm not going to say everybody, but, and then when I personally called the company and I told them who I was, that still today is Tuesday night, this happened yesterday during the day sometime, I still haven't gotten any answer back from anybody. Today I was in town, but I wasn't able to go by the office, which I'm thinking of doing tomorrow sometime when, during the day when I have time. But it, it's, it bothers me that we allow them to make money in our city and then they don't know who I am and here they are sticking their middle finger out at me. Is this how they treat the constituents of our city? One. Two, they don't pull over to pick up, to pick up their clientele in the middle of the street. They let people off in the middle of the street, having an empty spot right nearby. I think that we should have a meeting. Besides the, the, the letter that we're going to send, we should set a date for a meeting to have them come in and discuss the rules and regulations of how they should conduct themselves within our city limits. We are going to be, you know, letting them make a living here in our city and everything else. So we need to, everybody needs to respect each other. They're not allowing people to go by also, stopping in the middle of the street instead of stopping before the stop sign because they're trying to rush to get to where they need to go to. I've seen them go around school buses. So if we're going to, if we're going to, I think your, your letter, my amendment, would be a couple of things to add to that. But one of the things would be, we should set a meeting and we should meet with the prop, with the taxi owners. And the same way that they love to pack the house here, I'd love to see them pack the house to come and receive our complaints. Thank you. So I, I would like, I...
Which amendment do you want?
Well, I'd like, you were going to say something about beeping the horns, so now there's a bunch of rules. Do we have set rules for them that they need to follow within our city?
Yeah, they have to follow traffic rules. I mean, police department has to enforce the, the traffic rules.
Correct.
I mean, if they're, if they're obstructing the traffic, obviously that's a violation, they should get ticketed.
Obviously, traffic control isn't around. There, there are many, many, many taxi cab drivers within our city and we don't have the manpower to have traffic control follow them around. And by the time, I mean, you know, a finger gets, these incidents happen and, and they're not going to wait there for the police officer to come. People are not going to call in and say, "I'm having this trouble with," or "this problem with a taxi cab driver" when there are other issues within the city that are being taken care of at that time. But I, I believe that we need to have a meeting with them, have them come in so that we can let them know and, and have them sign something saying that, "I have read this." And have them sign it so that we know and how, hold them responsible and liable for it in their language, so they don't say that they didn't understand. Because I've heard that also. I met with another company and, "Oh yeah," you know, and I love my city, I love the people in it. We want to make sure that everybody gets along, but that really, oh, you, for the people who know me, that, you know, you know that phone call how I went through to that office. I was livid and I wish to God I had the time to walk into that office at that time. They wouldn't have liked it. The owners would have had to come down immediately. But I'm going to see if, if that happens tomorrow.
Thanks.
So, an amendment to that, I'm not sure if you'd like to pick a date or if we should send it or put it as an item on the agenda and, and handle this in a different way.
A couple of things, thank you for, for discussing it. One is that, once a year, we have the opportunity to hold their feet to the fire. That's today when the renewals come before us. So once a year, we have this opportunity. So once we vote for this today, they're going to go back out again and do whatever. So if you want to hold their feet to the fire on these things, making them accountable for their license renewals is the time to do it. I have no problems if you want to, through the committee process, get, bring them in to have a candid conversation. I'm not sure which committee that would be, for the counsel president, how he wants to do that. But, but to have a conversation about how the, that they can be better corporate citizens in our city, I'd be in favor of doing that, so.
I mean, there's other ways of doing stuff, something like that.
Yeah, I kind of want to hold them...
And I understand we're beating...
Hold the licenses, but I would love to meet with them and let them know what's going on.
We don't want to hold them.
I think it's only fair.
One of the things that we want to do, if you want to put this on the agenda, we can discuss it at the ordinance committee or you can always meet with them. I did it. I got them all together when I wanted the petition on the cab, on all the cab companies. I made a, you know, I took it up on myself to meet with each individual company just to see how they felt. You can do that yourself, go that avenue first, give them the benefit of the doubt.
Because I've gotten involved...
And then after that, if, if they don't work, then have a, a meeting with Lieutenant Conway and go that avenue because he's the one that controls them. If that doesn't work, if you want to bring him before the city council, put it on the agenda, have them all come in.
I think it's just a lot of work because they've called me to tell me, "Oh Sandy, you know, these cabs are still picking up people here, there and there, what can we do about this and that?" Well, the same with, you know, I, I kind of want the same response back. If we're trying to help them in one way, well, I kind of want that respect back because obviously I'm returning their phone calls and listening to their grief. So this is a grief that is not just about me. It's, it's something that we see out there, a lot of people are complaining about it. But I think that, well, what I'm going to do is, Counsel LaPlante, I'm going to put this as an item on the agenda and we'll have, we'll, we'll request that they come down and we'll, we'll hatch it out here. We'll do that.
Right.
Then we'll have enough time to visit the regulations, rules and whatever it is and we can tweak it and hopefully have them individually, as owners of their cabs, sign it saying that they have read and understand the rules and regulations of how they need to conduct business within our city and each individual driver is going to sign that. I mean...
Counsel LaPlante, I know you have a motion.
Yeah. So she's going to put it, Counsel...
She's going to put something on the agenda, so that's...
On your recommendation, I made that motion.
Can you repeat the motion, Counsel LaPlante's motion, so everybody's clear? Just want to make sure that everybody's clear.
It's just about the horn beeping.
I think his motion is to send a letter to each of the cab, cab companies to explain or discuss or remind them of their, their requirement to operate within the bounds of, of the ordinances and the regulations with common courtesy.
Most notably, the horns.
And horns. But what I'll do is I'll draft something, send it to you for approval.
Thank you. Okay.
So there's a motion, I'm looking for a second on the motion. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Counsel over now.
Can, I'd like to table this here.
Counsel over now.
I think what Counsel Almonte is, was going to say is, if it's truly to hold their feet to the fire and if this is truly the one time we have to get their response, if we table this item, I guarantee you, this room will be packed with cab drivers in two weeks. If that's what you want, I think the strongest way to send the message is to table the item tonight. They'll all be here and she can tell them whatever she needs to tell them. She doesn't have to call any kind of special meeting, put anything on the agenda. And maybe that's more than what we want to do. But at the same time, if the, if the, what we're looking for is for them to pay attention, that's going to get them to pay attention.
And summer's coming, so traffic out there is going to be crazy and we don't want people fist fighting in the middle of a street just because somebody doesn't want to move or whatever. So I'd like to make a motion to table.
Second. Second. And no discussion on the table.
Sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Roll call.
Counsel Vice President Rivera?
No.
Counsel Bernal?
Yes.
Counsel Aquino?
No.
Counsel Almonte?
Yes.
Counsel Reyes?
No.
Counsel Toomey?
Yes.
Counsel LaPlant?
Yes.
Counsel Vasquez noted?
He says yes.
Can't do it. Counsel President Moran?
Happy birthday.
Well, there's a reason why, well, there's no discussions.
We're going to have to call a special meeting, thank you.
I've all yes. I think we need to talk to them, have a conversation.
Thank you.
Point of inquiry.
Point of inquiry, Counsel, Counselor Toomey.
The seven cabs that are listed here, that's all the cabs that are in the city of Lawrence.
Those are the ones for now. Those are the ones that apply now.
Well, how often do these people have to renew their licenses?
Once a year.
Once a year.
When is that finalized?
It's now. I mean, they're all working on extensions right now, which they've been granted through the police department because this paperwork usually gets filed in December and we usually take this vote in January because of the situation with the head of the taxi cab position being transferred to a new officer. It didn't happen when it usually does. So right now, they are all working on an extension. So that extension is still valid for the next two weeks.
For the next two weeks? In other words, within the next two weeks, they...
Until we deny it, you know, unless we denied the renewal, it's valid until we deny the renewal. So we haven't denied the renewal, we're just tabling it. We're not telling them it can't work.
I understand now, when, when's, when's the cutoff date? In other words, that they have to have their license renewed?
They're already overlap.
They're, they're, they're on extension right now, they're beyond it.
They're beyond it?
Yeah.
So now that they're beyond it, is there, is there a definite time as to when the beyond stops? Or can they go through to the end of the year?
I think it's at the discretion of Lieutenant Conway, so I think it's... We, we take the lead from him on, I mean, he, he issues the medallions. He has authority to revoke the medallions.
Yeah, but we approve, we approve the license.
That's right.
All right. So isn't, there's a definite date when that license has to be approved? Like I know with an alcohol license, has to be approved before the end of the year.
These licenses should have been approved in January.
Okay, so they have, they have an extension now.
They're an extension.
Is there a limit to when the extension is going to start?
I don't know. I guess that's a question for Lieutenant Conway. I don't, I don't know.
Now, if we, we table this, this, at this point here, there's a...
It's already tabled.
Tabled.
I know it's already tabled. I know that. I know it's already tabled. I know that. And I assume we're going to send notifications to the cab companies?
That's, that was going to be my next, I'm going to need a motion to send the, actually, you know, I'll take, take it by myself and do that, through the, through the clerks, just to send the correspondence to all these cab companies to appear before us on our next city council meeting.
How about the ones that are, that have not submitted their application?
There's two that haven't. Diamond Taxi claims that they're not renewing, that they're going to pull off the streets. That's the claim. And American has an issue with their taxes. They had the same issue last year. We did grant them a waiver last year. They actually, it was because their landlord doesn't pay his taxes, they can't get their sign-offs from the tax assessor's office. So they're actually talking about moving their location so that they would have no new landlord, no landlord, so that issue would go away. So we're waiting for American, it has not filed for renewal because they're moving. And we're told the Diamond is not renewing at all, that they're pulling their cabs off the streets. That's what we're.
And that's all, that's all the taxi cab companies we have?
We have nine, yeah. And those are the.
Okay. So we can anticipate them come, if, when this letter goes out, we can anticipate them all being here. That's all I wanted to know, so they all.
They'll all be here.
Get the same information.
Yeah.
So just a point of order.
Thank you.
Point of order, Councilor.
So, just so that I'm quick, because I'm, I'm kind of a rookie, so sometimes I have to ask these questions.
You're no rookie anymore.
So if.
You're a veteran.
Can't use that anymore.
Can't use it anymore? So if somebody in the prevailing side moved to reconsider?
I can do that.
Before the night's over, that can happen, and then we can reconsider it, and it can come off the table and be voted on?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear. I didn't know if that was true or not.
Are you hoping that happens?
No, I'm just asking a question. No, just, Councilor, Tumi seemed like he had some questions about it, maybe he feels it.
Next item on the agenda is document sixty-three, review and approval of annual application to head for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, for one point, one million three hundred and six thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars in home funding for five hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred and forty-eight, submitted by James H. Barnes, Community Development Director, signing him up from the Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Chair from the Budget and Finance.
Again, Councilors, thank you, Mr. President. This item was before the Budget and Finance Committee. It was sent up. You have the packet. It was, it's in your packet as the information of what was going to be spent on. It was debated at length. This item was sent up with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I do that as a form of a motion.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, yes. Roll call.
Discussion.
Council Vasquez noted. Council LaPlante.
Yes.
Council Tumi.
Yes.
Council Reyes.
No.
Council Monte.
No.
Council Kino.
Yes.
Council Bernal.
Yes.
Council Vice President Rivera.
Yes.
And Council President Moran.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. To order a public hearing.
To order a public hearing.
Just to order a public hearing.
So next, two weeks from now, we're going to actually discuss it.
Take the final vote. Yes.
Okay.
But if somebody wanted to impact the amount of money that is going to be put on there, they should probably speak to the mayor between now and then?
Yes.
I.
That's, that's on the next, on the public hearing.
Next item on the agenda is document sixty-four, authorization to expand grant funds for Police Department, FY thirteen, E nine-one-one training grants for fifty-five thousand five hundred and four, from the Executive Office of Public Safety, EOPSS, supplemental funding from EOPSS for twenty-eight thousand. This is a new grant, total amount of eighty-three thousand five hundred and four, submitted by Mark J. Iannello, Budget and Finance Director, came up from the Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Chair from the Budget and Finance. Thank you, Mr. President. This item was before the Budget and Finance Committee. This is actually an adjustment to the original grant. The original grant that we already approved was fifty-five thousand. They got an initial twenty-eight thousand. So we got to approve them to spend an extra twenty-eight thousand. This came up with a unanimous favorable recommendation. Do that as a form of a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
Councilor LaPlante.
An explanation. I know there's a lot of paperwork here, but just capsize. Summary as to what this extra money is going to be spent on?
I prefer if the, I know that Kathy from the Police Department is present, if she can come up and answer that question.
Name an address for the record, please.
Kathleen Flanagan, Loma's Police Department. Good evening.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Flanagan. I appreciate it. So the question here is that we're actually adding twenty-eight thousand dollars more to this grant. Just in a summary, what can the citizens expect to see from that, those public monies?
This is a grant, this grant, all this grant money is being used to train civilian and police call takers. They have to be recertified this year by June thirtieth, and we originally received fifty-five thousand, then we needed more money, and we were awarded another twenty-eight thousand to complete our training.
This is not a casual comment, but I have heard from a number of constituents about the call takers themselves. And there's concerns about rudeness. I hear that frequently. I know that each, one of these calls are monitored. But I guess at this point, because part of this is going toward, toward recertifying and training.
Yes.
And maybe part of the recertification, or at least part of their training, is a little customer service. So when people do call the police department, they're usually victims of some sort of crime or some sort, and whoever's taking the call should understand that there's a reason why they're calling. It's not because they want to call the police department, because something is happening that needs some sort of impending result or some action. So, if you could just take that message back to whoever, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
I certainly will.
Anybody else? No? There's a motion on the table? In second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it. Next item on the agenda is document sixty-five, second-hand dealer license, one ninety-seven S X Street. This item came up from the Ordinance Committee, Madam Chair from the Ordinance.
Thank you, Council President. This applicant did appear before us at the ordinance committee level. Just want to stress to the other members of the board that this is a second-hand dealer license. This is not old gold. This is not a pawn shop. This is not jewelry being sold. Mike?
Mike?
Oh. Thank you. Thank you, Council President. At the Thursday, March twenty-first meeting, the ordinance committee did review this application. The applicant was there. His paperwork was in order. And we did vote, is it a renewal? And this is for old gold. This is not, this is not old gold, excuse me. This is not the sale of jewelry or any kind of pawn shop. So I just want to stress that for the record. And did come up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to issue that renewal, and to make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Sorry.
Do I get a second? All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, we're drawing, we have one. Before I start here, I want to take one item. I know there's an item here, and I see some department heads. I wish I would have taken this earlier. We received an email from Council Vice Chair Rivera a couple of days ago after the horrendous fire that we had on Hancock Street, and all the issues that we have with the fire hydrant. And I like, looking for a motion to suspend the rules and take this item as an emergency. And I want to put it under communication item before I can send it to a committee, so we can have a small debate here, and then we'll send it to a committee for, to further debater, unless Council Vice Chair wants to.
Make a motion to.
Second.
To put on communication and then send it to the committee.
So motion on the table, take this item as, to suspend the rules. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it. The item is, emergency CDY fire hydrant testing and assessment to be conducted. This item was submitted by Council Vice President Dan Rivera, and the document number is eighty-eight. I'm going to be sent, I'm going to be sending this item to a committee, but before that, I want Council Vice Chair to have the table for five minutes.
Yeah, no, I won't, I won't be long on this. I think this is, you know, I think that when we, we all saw the horrific fire, that's been a long line of fires that we've had in this community, we always think back to something that, when I first came on, Council Tumi had been talking about for a long time, that there's water pressure problems that then would cause us to have fire issues for our ability to fight fires. So I think, you know.
Excuse me, point of inquiry. It's not so much water pressure as water volume. There's a difference. There's a difference. Big difference in the two.
So I'll, I'll just, the water volume to be able to fight the fire. And, you know, seeing that this happened, I guess, part of my concern is that we should know where the hydrants are problematic, and have those clearly marked, and then know where the water volume or water pressure is the worst, so that, you know, that when they're going to a scene, they know ahead of time they might need a pump truck or not. And I understand that we have old pipes throughout the city, and I don't pretend to be a firefighter or know about firefighters, but I think that you'd want to know the lay of the land ahead of time, if we can get that stuff marked, so they know which ones are specifically being, are problematic, that we know ahead of time before we get there. That's the gist of what I wanted to do, is ask for the DPW director and the fire chief to sit down together, because I know the, after having talked to the DPW director, that they definitely do annual inspections. Just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page, which ones are the problem ones, which ones aren't, and have that list distributed to all firefighters and all firefighter personnel, as well as the superior officers in the Fire Department. The last part of it is the one that everybody wants to talk about, which is how we're going to fix this thing. But as you saw tonight, we borrowed, we're going to borrow up to two and a half million dollars to fix a school. We borrowed twenty-four, twenty-seven million dollars, twenty-seven-three, to get us out of, to get us out of debt. We've been doing a lot of borrowing. So I think that we just got to be careful about the answer to this being, let's borrow another twenty million dollars to fix this problem, when we could really have some short-term plans to fix, you know, it's not going to get it all done in one shot, but if you can do ten to fifteen, five to, five to seven every year, you may get the result that you want over time. So instead of, and if we had done five every year, since I was on the council, we would have done fifteen, going on twenty, streets or whatever, pipes or, you know, hydrants or whatever it is that needs to be done. So sometimes these things happen, and then everybody gets their hair on fire, and they're like, oh, this problem is so beyond us, and it's all this big thing. And the reality is, if we, if we take these one bite at a time, we can, we can make each corner of the city safer little by little. So it doesn't seem like it's this huge, unsurmountable thing. And I think you start by saying, these hundred fire hydrants, these two hundred fire hydrants are problematic. These fifty streets, these sixty streets are problematic. And then the firefighters know where those things are. Everybody knows where those things are, so that when they go to fight a fire in that area, they could actually plan ahead of time to have the equipment they need. And so I think that part of this is to, just to make a motion, just to have that, to send a letter to the chief, the fire chief, and the DPW director, to have that sit down and come up with that list, a physical written list of the hydrants that are problematic, and the streets where these problems are occurring more often than not. And if it's all over the city, then, then give every street a grade. I don't want to just be told that it's all over the city. I want to give every street a grade, or every, every hydrant a grade, so we know there's some streets, streets are better, better than others. And I think that's part of this, this discussion. It's not so much that we're going to wave a wand tonight and fix it, or that we've been ignoring it, because there's clearly been some work being done to it, but that both the Fire Department knows where the problems are, as well as the DPW Department, and when we go to fight a fire, everybody's clear about what equipment is needed. So that's the motion that I want to, to put to send that letter.
Is it a motion to them, for them to sit down, or you want a motion to have them come before the subcommittee and give us a plan?
First, I want them, well, yeah, I guess to come, to have the written plan come to us before the subcommittee, yeah. But I know they're here, and I feel like we should give them an opportunity to explain what's gone, what's going on, so people know that there's been some work, and what's known and what's not known. But even though we will have a presentation, I still think we need that list of where the problems are, and where the problem hydrants are, where the problem streets are. And if it's, again, I'll say it again, if it's every street and every fire hydrant, then I want, I want to just get a grade from, you know, the worst to best. It shouldn't be just, oh, it's everywhere. It's, or if it's everywhere, then which, which is the worst compared to which is the best?
Do you want to add a timetable, or due date, month from now, or month and a half?
Well, I think, I think times are the essence. I think you got, I think two weeks is, is a good time to get some of that, especially if they've done annual reviews, they should have some information about what's going on.
I know I noticed we have some department heads here. Do you want to?
Yeah, absolutely.
Name an address for the record, please.
John I. Sancy, one Nicky Street, Acting DPW Director. And I couldn't agree more with the Council, that we should be interfacing more with the Fire Department, and we did so for many years. Whenever they had a fire, we would get a call, send our hydrant people out, and assist them to get on hydrants, and point out to them which hydrants would be usable, and which ones would be advantageous to them. Should be noted, and I got a little handout here, I'm going to pass out, maybe take a quick read. I also have some photographs of the hydrants in question, because actually, the hydrants aren't broken at all. There's not a broken hydrant on that street.
Is there any broken hydrant in the whole city?
Absolutely. There are hydrants down. We supply.
Their label?
We supply the Fire Department with a list, monthly, of the hydrants that are down currently, right now. I believe there's thirteen hydrants down throughout the whole city. And they are inspected on an annual basis with reports.
So they know just by looking at a fire hydrant that that's not working?
You can't tell by looking at it. They have their address. They have a report that states what the issue is, what the pressure coming out of them is. And they also have an address where that hydrant is located. When it's out of service, hit by a car, whatever it might be, we send a list to the Fire Department, so they're aware of what hydrants aren't available.
Okay.
Two thousand and nine, I'm going to give you a letter, was written by staff in the department, not solicited, written to the mayor at the time.
Well, you know what I'm looking at? In the heat of the moment, when you got a fire and you have three houses burning down, I mean, do you want a firefighter to just go through a list of sheet and looking for a specific number to see if he's working or not? Can we just color code him and, you know?
They're coded, high, high and low pressure. The yellows are the low pressure, reds are the high pressure, standard throughout the state. I can read this letter aloud. It might not be very tasteful to the residents, but it is a factual letter. Your Water Department in two thousand and nine was six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the red, meaning you couldn't afford to make repairs if you wanted to. You had no money.
Now, how many of these are in that condition? How many fire hydrants are in that condition?
Are in what condition?
A condition that you can repair, beyond repair.
If they're beyond repair, they're taken out and replaced. They're not left there broken. We find out there's a malfunctioning hydrant, we replace it or repair it. They're not left there. So that letter, if you would care, I will read it out. This letter was addressed to the mayor at the time. Says, "Good morning, gentlemen. I'm at a total loss on whom to contact about the mounting problems that I am facing with my water and sewer department, equipment vehicles, and sewer lift stations. Today I was informed by, my two, my twelve-year-old, one-ton trucks have failed inspection and may need more money to repair it than it's worth. One of our trucks have a dump body with a tailgate that does not lock over, has not locked in over two years, making it almost useless except to transport men and plow. I use this truck to maintain the reservoir grounds. The other truck is used by the meter crew to install and repair meters and turn on water services. The crew, the crews, using his personal vehicle, try to get this work done. I do not actually have a dump truck that works and have to borrow a street department truck whenever I have a digging job. You can imagine the scheduling difficulties I face considering I have a digging job almost daily. I expect my other vehicles may have the same problems when I send them out to be inspected since they are all about the same age. My compressors are twenty years old. One of my compressors is down. I hope to send it out this week to be evaluated on whether, whether rebuilding it would be an economically feasible thing to do. My other compressors are also on their last legs. One of my sewer flushes, two sewer rotters are in worse shape. Both are down and not repairable, leaving me with one broken-down flusher that barely works. Recently, I've had to call a private contractor, who I will not name here, to most of, to do most of our sewer calls at greater expense to the city, because our flusher could not handle the job. Our only backhoe is twenty-nine years old. All of our emergencies, all of our digging are essentially emergencies. Traditionally, we've had two backhoes, one for the sewer, one for the Water Department. But a few years ago, one of our backhoes was sold at auction and never replaced. The city has four sewer lift stations, two of which are in need of serious repair. The lift station on Pilgrim Road was scheduled to be replaced six years ago. That work was never done. We have been patching this station every year since, keeping it running at a very high cost, one for repair, and two, I have to send a crew out every weekend to physically check and make sure the station has not failed flooding the surrounding houses. The station takes about twenty-four hours to overflow, and although it causes me great concern, if the station ever totally fails, I could send a private contractor out to empty it once a day to avoid the disaster. The station on Lisa Lane is another story. It's given me many sleepless nights. The station on Lisa Lane has two ejector pumps that have been running on one pump for a number of years. When this second pump occasionally fails, my men respond with an emergency.
I think I got it.
You have the gist of what's going on here.
I think I ha, I, I get the point.
Your sewer and water department were destined to be.
We get the point of, I'm sorry, I sense you, my question is, what do we do? Stick our head in the sand and?
No, and that's exactly why I'm leading to this. Today, you have a seven million-plus surplus in that department, when you, four years ago, you were six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the red. On top of that, we've done numerous pieces of work to improve the financial stability of that enterprise fund. Because without some capital, you're not going to make any repairs, and you had no money to make repairs. Okay, since then, we've turned it around to give it seven million plus. We've bonded to do sixteen million dollars' worth of valve replacement and efficiency items within the plant and around the surrounding pieces that support that system. Okay? That's to save money, all of it. Solar panels, reduce costs, so we can build some money. Everybody's getting new meters. Meters lose one and a half percent of accuracy every ten years. We have meters that have been out there forty, fifty years. You're losing money. The people who have a new meter are supporting the ones who have the old meters. The ones who have the old meters aren't paying their fair share. Everybody gets a new meter now. And the meters are right here. Radio read meter. Everybody's getting one of these. It's the most accurate meter on the planet right now. There are no moving parts. There's a twenty-year warranty. This is your cash register. Okay? Without this, you don't have revenue. You cannot do repairs without revenue. Okay?
My quick question I have for you, it's a.
This is a four-inch water main, okay? This is a tuberculated, four-inch water main, okay? Put four fire hydrants on this. Open up the fire hydrant, see how much water pressure, how much volume they're going to get. The pressure will be there, the volume will not be. how much volume they're going to get. The pressure will be there, the volume will not be. Okay, you have a city full of six-inch lines that look very similar to that. Okay, why we bonded for the other 16 million is we can't repair this pipe unless we can shut off both ends. We have to change the valves that are broken first so we can isolate sections of pipe like this and then clean them. You have to apply for this money, SRF funding, a year in advance. So there's a lot of forethought, a lot of planning that goes on. The money that you guys signed for, the 15.8 million, we applied for that money in early 2011. Last year, we applied for cleaning and lining money, strictly cleaning and lining of pipes. Okay, we were approved. It's a highly competitive process to get that money. We rated number two. Okay, we can have the money. We need the money to be able to pay for that, though. So we need revenue, hence the meters, hence the solar panels, hence the reduction in motor sizes at the plant.
Mr. President?
I mean, that's, that's, I understand that we want all the Cadillac tools and we need all the money or all the belts and whistles to get, to get proper storage, to get the great piping. But what do we do in the meantime? Do we just, we don't have a plan?
Well, actually, that's 15.8-
I know, what I'm saying is, I'm looking at a memo from 2009. I'm sure from 2009 you had a a plan. So you have a plan since 2009, which area to attack, which are the problem areas?
We're actually cleaning and lining and changing broken valves on a notoriously low water volume area starting now. And that's Park Street from Lawrence Street to Berkeley, Paul Street, and the corner of Park and Berkeley up to Hall where that initial fire was.
I remember that.
That's on the agenda this year, starting in a month. Okay, so we have a plan. That was going to be our pilot to show you what we plan on doing with the $22 million that we have been approved for. We could come down here, show you the difference on hydrant pressure and flow prior to cleaning and then after cleaning.
What's provide the pressure? I thought it was the pump from the truck that provides the pressure. Oh, the pressure comes from the pump?
Pressure comes from the lines.
Not the actual hydraulic pump that's on the truck that actually suck the water?
Really don't have to. In fact, I'm going to pass out these photos. These are photos of the hydrants on Hancock Street. The first photo is on Mason and Hancock. Okay, that's where they, where they ended up getting the most of their volume of water.
So John, what are we looking at? What's the dollar amount that we're looking at? I'm sorry.
I have a question I want to ask him.
Just see if he knows a dollar amount that we can't afford. What's the dollar amount, John?
What can we, what can we not afford?
I'm just kind of confused, so.
You lost about $700,000 in property. How can you not afford to do these things? If you don't know, the PSI, pounds per square inch, coming from the hydrant. Page one is Mason Street. Being fed by a six-inch line off of a 20-inch? 20-inch. Okay, see the volume of water coming out of that? 1,665 gallons per minute. That'll knock the house over. Okay, you flip the pages, same PSI essentially on the other hydrants, but no gallons per minute. Know why that is? You got a six-inch line coming up Hancock Street. It's tuberculated, like the pipe I just showed you. You couldn't possibly put enough water in there. The city's predominantly in these neighborhoods, six-inch water lines, especially the earlier ones.
Question? Counselor Tum.
May I ask my question now?
Sure.
Would you mind explaining how important it is to have volume versus pressure for a fire?
I think this right here speaks for itself.
Some people might not understand what what we're trying to get at here.
Here's a volume of water right here, 1,665 gallons per minute. That'll knock your house over. PSI, pounds per square inch, 60 pounds. Let's flip the page. 55 pounds per square inch, 170 gallons per minute. That's a stunning fact right there. There is no water volume there. You got plenty of pressure. There's just no water. They're correct, but it's not broken hydrants. Cleaning line the pipes.
I have a question.
Counselor Tum, we answered table enough.
This has, this has been something that's been on my mind for a long, long time. Actually, since the Churn Hall fire up on, I think it was 2008. I arrived there and I watched this fire, this fire truck with just a piddling drop of water coming out of its pump and come to find out that they had it on the lines all the way down Lawrence Street. You have the volume of water up there to be able to feed the-
There's a 12-inch on Lawrence-
The pressure can be added through the pumpers in the line. But in order to get the volume of water needed to put the fire out, you have to have the volume of water available. And what's happening here and what's happening on Park Street is the, what's, how big's the main line on the Park Street?
It starts at a 12 off of Lawrence Street. It's got an eight that goes up Park Street and then it branches off into all sixes.
All sixes.
And that's an older part of town.
And and that's been up there for quite a number of years in Park Street, so I assume it's percolated quite a bit.
If I'm not mistaken, anything late 1800s to 1930s, the water was sanitized with chlorine gas. There was no corrosion control. So the earlier parts of the city, the pipes look like those, just like those. Some of your bigger mains downtown here, they've all been serviced and cleaned. They're not an issue. It's in those neighborhoods where those six inches are and those eight-inch feeder lines that are the problem. We have a plan. We've had a plan right along. This is the final portion of a large-scale rehabilitation of your whole water system. Now, $22 million is not going to clean 140 miles of mains. You have 140 miles of mains in the ground. You're not going to clean them with that. But maybe you do 10 miles of the most critical areas. But you should certainly get it done because the results are right here. They're right here. You're not going to change it.
That's been my fear for all this period of time is that if you do not get the proper volume of water in the area to feed a fire, to get a fire out, you're going to wind up with what happened on Hancock Street. You get one house up, going up, and you don't, you you don't have the power within the water structure to put, to even put up there to put it out because of the percolation within the, within the piping come to it.
You hook up four hydrants to that line right there and open them up with four four-inch lines, you could, you might as well spit on the fire. That's not a joke.
Well, it isn't a joke.
Because I'm heartsick over these people losing their homes, all their possessions, their pets. Everything they own goes up in these fires.
You all set?
Well, I might have been complaining. What I don't understand is when all this started, I did approach both the the state and the federal government looking for some funds to be able to supply the city with some cash to be able to do things like this, even with the Obamacare shovel-ready thing, okay? But they did not look at anything that I presented before them as a public safety issue. And this is exactly what this is.
There's no question about it.
It's a public safety issue. This could happen anywhere where we have two or three family homes that are so close together you can reach out and shake hands with your neighbor.
We would love to snap our fingers and and clean these all up now, but it's not possible.
No, I know that.
It's not. And it takes a lot of planning and a lot of strategy. We've developed a strategy. We've developed the plans. We've seeked the financing. We got the financing. We're trying to raise enough capital to be able to pay for that, which, we're trying to do this without raising rates. So if you can get 30-plus million dollars worth of programs in the street without raising rates, I think you've been more than successful. And that's the plan. So you forced us to come down in front of you and lay out our cards a little bit earlier than we wanted to.
That's good to hear.
But we are prepared. I have a little PowerPoint to show you where we're going and what we're doing.
What do we have in our, in our enterprise fund? I know we have on the, on our rainy day fund.
We're north of $7 million.
$7 million.
Plus.
We can't, we can't even make a dent with that money.
You, you want to, you need capital in hand.
I understand that, but try to tell this family here, I could have saved your house, but guess what?
We could be working on Hancock Street and we could break out another fire down on Lee Street. And I don't want to point to any street that we know. That piece of pipe came from Prospect Court in 2003. Okay, I don't want to go tell them that their pipes look like that, but that's the fact.
Well, you just told me.
Well, we're not hiding. We're just telling you that these are the significant issues. We've, you got a new plant. All your water tanks have been rehabbed. You're getting all new meters. This is the final piece. Because when they go in and do cleaning and lining, they also repair all the valves that may be broken and any hydrant issues they may have, they repair right then and there.
How many of the $7 million that we have in a rainy day fund and the water sewer budget, how many areas can we fix with that money?
Um, we're doing-
Because I know you just told me we have some real problem areas.
We do. And and to spend your capital is not the best attack here. I mean, because you go fast SRF funding, it's 2% to some debt forgiveness. So it really turns out to be very advantageous and prudent financially. The last thing you want to do is a knee-jerk reaction, spend all your capital to fix one spot when you got 15 more that need work.
Tell the family they lost the home, that we-
Which family do you want to pick to protect?
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, well, go and attack the problem areas first, trying to fix those.
What, what happens?
We know which one-
What happens here with our management study that is currently underway, we develop a hydraulic model. And that model tells us exactly where to go. It's not a knee-jerk reaction. It's data that drives where you go.
You've given me the data. You've given me the information, which is a good thing that you are.
No, these are just raw pictures.
I mean, ready this picture here? You show me three problem-
That's one street.
Pumps. I'm just saying.
Yeah, but that's one line.
And we know that-
You have 140 miles of them.
I understand, but you can fix every other one. We've seen what the fire department does sometimes. They, they run a mile worth of hoses to the best, the best hydrant where they can get the better pressure. If one block you can fix one or two is better than the firefighters going two miles down, at least they know they're going to find one working, good fire hydrant in their block.
Clearly, we're going to be working hand in hand with the fire department in deciding what areas are going to be done. But it's going to be done on a scientific basis. The data driven by hydraulic models.
And and I hope that, you know, and I hope what Counselor, Counselor Vice Chair's suggestion for yourself and the firefighters to get together, come up with a plan, because I'm looking at my plan and I'm, my math says grab one fire hydrant in each block, attack it that way first. Instead of grabbing five of them, grab one. At least you know there's a nice working fire hydrant in that block.
You can't just go to a fire hydrant, crack the thing, run a little reamer through it and clean out that one hydrant. It doesn't work that way. You got to start at the very beginning of the line. Isolate a section of pipe, clean that, move to the next section. It doesn't quite go, just open this hydrant and clean that spot. And I'm going to, I'm going to drop it down to Jim Revad here and let him do it.
Oh, Counselor LaPlante has a question. I know he's been anxious.
So we all have, we all have our districts. For some of us are at large. But I guess for my district, I'm just curious to know if you have the details tonight. I'd be interested in getting that, if not later. Is there any areas in my area in District F that would have water pressure slash volume issues? And if you broken it down like that so we can get that, so I can get that information?
When we develop the hydraulic model, we'd be happy to to send it to the districts and let them know what their positions are. Currently downtown is the only area I know that is clean. Their lines are clean, clean, clean. We could knock down buildings with the water pressure down here.
Volume.
It's volume.
Volume, right. So why did, I mean, I hate to pit districts versus, but why was part of the city designed first to get that?
The older sections. The older sections clearly have the older pipes. They were, the water was sanitized, disinfected with a different method. Today, we have, we disinfect with corrosion control so we don't have these type of issues. These are fixable.
What's the timeframe of getting that report?
Good evening, counselors. My name is Jim Revad. I'm with Woodard Inc. and with the, in addition to operating the water plant, we're also engineering and consulting for the, for the water department. I did have a PowerPoint presentation, but actually, John, we didn't even talk about it. He covered most of the things that I was going to mention in the, in the presentation. One of the things that the, that John did mention is that the projects that we've been completing and projects that we're about to complete recently are to basically generate revenue, replacing large meters in the city. That's all completed. We're starting to replace the residential meters. And last summer, the city council approved $15 million worth of, of money to upgrade the water system. Some of that is energy improvements. There's also, there's also money in there to replace all of the residential meters and to start to replace some of the valves in the distribution system that we know are broken. They're broken closed that really, and they cause restrictions in the, in the water system, which is hindering the, the flow of water to, to fight the fires. So those, all of those projects are, have just been awarded. We're going to start construction on all of those. We, we had to get them all awarded by April 1st, which we did. And as a result of that, the city should be receiving about a million dollars worth of principal forgiveness for that, for those projects. But those projects are all ongoing. They're all going to help generate additional revenue, reduce operating costs, and to really start, this will be the first project that's really going to make some headway on improving the, the fire flows in the water system. As, as also part of that funding, you approve funding for a, to do a hydraulic model and a master plan. We're going to be out in the streets doing fire flows all over the city and we're going to develop a hydraulic model so we can predict what we need to do in every street in the city to bring the fire flows back up to an acceptable level. I understand your concern when, when there is a fire, you obviously would like to just fix that one area. All of that does cost money and what we want to do is put together a plan so that you maximize every dollar that you spend. So for the first, say, million dollars, you want to be able to bring adequate fire flow to the, the most hydrants you possibly can in the city. And it will finally get to a point that, you know, you may be spending a substantial amount of money just to do the last few hydrants in the city. But you want to, you really want to focus on getting as many of these hydrants in the neighborhoods up to acceptable levels. So, and right now, there, there's a number of issues. One is these broken valves that are in the system. And the other is these, the tuberculated pipes, which essentially you had mostly six-inch pipes.
Point of information.
Point of information, Counselor Rivera.
When are we going to have the report?
That was my question. We'll probably have that report completed in three or four months.
The full hydraulic?
Mm-hmm.
And so that's essentially what the council, the vice president is looking for, part of it anyway, which is looking for to figure out what the, where the problem areas are. I think that's part of what he explained.
Yes.
And so we'll have a breakdown citywide as to where, where the, where the, he calls it grades, but, you know, where the, the good ones are and where the not so good ones are. However, you'll break them down. So we're looking at four months, sometime in August.
That's something that we're, you know, we're actively working on, on right now.
Anybody else? Counselor Rivera?
Sorry. Again, I, I started this conversation because it's very, very easy to feel like we're under an avalanche. And if you heard what just, what we, what we're up against, it is very clear that we're under an avalanche of fixing stuff. But that's not how you solve problems. You got to go, you got to take one bite at a time. So between now and the time we get the data, we should mark the hydrants. So between now and the time we get the data, we should mark the hydrants. And, and we should tell the fire department specifically where that problem's going to be at. And they should either have it easily mapped out before they roll out of the firehouse, or they should have it on, on their person. That's something we can do that costs us no money. You guys did this. This is awesome. You should have a picture like this for every fire hydrant. And it's money, and it's time well spent. You know why it's time well spent? Because like we told the department head and inspectional services, if you just put it in a spreadsheet, it'll be easy to capture. You don't have to get a ninety million dollar. You don't have to spend all that money just upfront. You do something very basic so that everybody knows that when I go to Mason and Water Street, I get sixty PSI, whatever the fifteen pit top means. I have no idea what that means. And then when I go to one thirteen, you know, if I go to one thirteen Hancock Street, I'm going to get something totally different. Not because that's going to make the water come out faster, but that's going to just help the fire department deploy their equipment easier. That is a zero cost situation. And I, again, we're talking about borrowing twenty million. We just borrowed three. I know everybody wants to talk about how easy it is to borrow twenty million. It's not like spending twenty million. It's like getting a twenty million dollar credit card. So if we had started in two thousand and eight doing little bits and pieces, we would have been a lot, far a long way today. To Council, to Council Moran's part, Council President's part, point. So I don't think we can wait till we get twenty million dollars to spend. I think you've got to start today and do whatever you can for zero cost.
I agree with the council.
So I, I get frustrated because sometimes we're like the city of no. Like we can't do it. And we gotta, we have to have this huge thing to fix it. Let's just start on something small. I feel like, so we can tell folks in their homes that even if you have a corroded pipe, a pipe in your street, the firefighters know where it's at and they're going to, when they get deployed to something on your street, DPW has informed them in a way that they're going to be able to fight the fire well. That's all I'm asking. I'm not asking for you guys to, to, to change the pipes in the street overnight. That's, that's a crazy, a crazy request from us. Whenever, that was never going to be my intent. My intent was make sure that everyone knows where those problem spots are so you can fight around them. Thank you, Council President. Anybody else?
I mean, I know the chief Bergerin is here. I would like to hear from your chief. Your thoughts?
Good evening. Uh, I'd like to thank, you know, our DPW Director John Insensei for the work that he's done in, uh, you know, putting a plan together, very definitive plan for improving the water system within the city. And I'd like to give credit to the council, the mayor this past year for approving the, was it fifteen million dollar bond? To actually get some of this work done. The situation that we had on Hancock Street, where the first arriving crews got on scene, they had reports that there were people in the building. We have a procedure, a standard procedure where we send firefighters in a building and they take an attack line in with them. That attack line can deliver approximately a hundred and fifty gallons of water every minute. We carry seven hundred and fifty gallons on our truck. If you're flowing a hundred and fifty gallons a minute, you do the math, it's real simple. That tank of water lasts five minutes. So our procedure goes on to say that the next arriving engine company ties into the nearest hydrant. Whatever condition that hydrant might be, you know, assuming that we know that it's not one that's on the list that's been taken out of service for repair. In that case, again, they went to a hydrant on Hancock Street. And as we heard the DPW director tell us tonight, it only flows a hundred and seventy gallons a minute. Which was enough, at least initially, to make sure, to ensure that those firefighters that went inside that building had a, a consistent, constant supply of water. But beyond that, now the fire is developing. Uh, it's growing exponentially. And they realize that it, it's no longer, you know, they've determined that there's nobody inside the building. They need to get out. And there is not sufficient water for us to deal with the situation that we have. To get the water that we need, we now like to lay a four inch line. There's a six inch line in the street. We're laying actually a smaller line, four inch line, all the way out to Water Street. That takes time. Takes equipment, takes manpower, know how to get that done. In the meantime, again, the fires are aging out of control. One other thing that, uh, you know, has really changed in the past thirty-six years since I've come on the fire department. Uh, UL, under writers, lab, underwriters' laboratories done extensive studies on this. Actual, uh, under laboratory conditions have shown very clearly that when I came on to the department, you know, when a fire started, it took twenty or thirty minutes to get to the point of flashover. Flashover is when a, a room is fully involved with flame. Today that only takes three or four minutes. So what we're dealing with as firefighters is substantially different from what we had just twenty, thirty years ago. But yet we're, we're, we're in a situation here in the city where we have a water supply system that's been benignly neglected, you know, for how many years? Fifty years? And again, you know, no fault of anybody other than the fact that the city really hasn't had the finances, the resources available to maintain that system. And again, once again, I applaud all of us, you know, the DPW, uh, Jim Revad, uh, and again, the mayor and the council for finally putting a plan together and attacking the problem. It's not going to be solved overnight, but we've made that initial inroad to, to correct the situation. The point that you made, Councilor Vera, about marking hydrants, uh, it's an excellent idea. It's something that we sought to do, you know, many years ago. Uh, the problem in doing that, and you know, I, I'll point it out, it wasn't John, you know, previous DPW directors when we approached them about doing this. You can't do that because we have so many, you know, problem areas in the city. It's, it's going to cause an uproar amongst the citizen and it very well might. But there's a way of doing it today, you know, putting that information in a computer database that can be readily accessed, you know, at the scene. Or even, you know, as we study locations of streets, you know, we can study also the, uh, which hydrants are good and which hydrants are bad. So again, that's, that's something that needs to be done. That database needs to be developed. And I would suggest that we do what, uh, you know, Mr. Revan has suggested. We need to do that hydraulic study. That really cannot be completed though until such time as they actually repair some of those broken valves. Only then will you get a good sense of the water that's available, you know, throughout the system. You've got to do that first. You've got, you've got to approach this in steps. So I'm hoping by the end of the summer, when they could complete that hydraulic study, they're actually going to go out, they're going to flow test hydrants. You're going to be getting calls from your, uh, constituents complaining about the brown and rusty water that people are getting, you know, inside their homes. But it's something that needs to be done. Everybody needs to understand this in order to correct the situation. Once that hydraulic study is complete, and again, hopefully by the end of August, uh, they'll produce a, uh, hydraulic map of the entire city, which will indicate the flow rates, you know, throughout the entire city and where our major problem areas are. They'll indicate, again, basically, uh, I hope, most of the hydrants in the city as to what the flow rates are available and what plan needs to be taken, what, what's going to be the next step in order to bring those hydrants, that water volume back up to required fire flow for a particular area.
I'm, I'm very happy to hear that. I, I just wonder, I just wonder, do you think between now, is there anything that we can do now between, into between now and August to do some of that marking just ahead of time or even just so that folks know what some of that is? I mean, even if it's temporary, because it's, that's four long months and it's summer and, I mean, it's not, it's not heat fi, um, you know, heat fire weather, but it's hot.
Any markings that we would make, for instance, on a hydrant? No. I mean, one thing that other communities have done is they actually paint, whether it's the cap on a hydrant or the actual hydrant itself, you know, a different color, that gives an indication of the amount of water that would be available in a fire situation. Uh, you wouldn't want really to go out and do that until such time as you've completed this, because you just have to end up going out and doing that work all over again.
Could you, could you not mark them, but you, you guys can come up with a list so that you know what, where the problem areas are now in short term?
We know pretty much, you know, again, where the problem areas are. And again, what I was trying to point out in describing the situation that we had on Hancock Street is that, uh, again, you know, the fire is today developed much quicker than what they did in years past. And we have that, again, that, that procedure. And again, it's required for the safety of our firefighters. Again, we get a report that somebody's inside of a building. We have to secure, you know, an immediate water supply. Even if the hydrant isn't that good, just to make sure that, you know, that, uh, that initial crew going in with that attack line has a constant flow of water for their protection and for anybody else, you know, citizen that might be inside the building we're trying to rescue.
Do we need a pump truck?
Uh, I'd very much like to have, you know, more firefighters, you know, again, for a city of the size of Lawrence, we should, again, inginate on the Ave Street, you know, that, that firehouse should be open. That house, there should be another engine company up there, you know, fully staffed. But again, we don't have the resources to do that.
I, I think I was asking specifically that, that truck that you guys had to get from mutual aid that helped pump the water. Did I get that wrong?
No, we did. Actually, uh, you know, our two main sources of supply, water supply at that fire in Hancock Street actually came from a, an engine company that was set at the hydrant at Water and Mason Street. That's the, uh, yeah, the, the picture, this picture here that, uh, John, you know, showed to all of you. They tied into this one here. And the second good water supply that we got actually was from a, a pump from Anova that's set just down the street from this one here.
So do we not have our own pump equipment? Because I know that, I know that we.
No, we do. Uh, and again, you know, I could describe to you exactly where they set, um.
So we don't need a pump, a pump?
Well, again.
We need the bodies to run it, is what you're saying. Are you saying, I'm trying to figure that part out.
Right, yeah.
So we do have the equipment, we just need to, we, we would need more bodies to run it.
Yeah, I would like to have another engine company in service, you know, for a city of the size of Lawrence. With, and again, like for instance, uh, for the type of demographic that we have, you know, the older construction, the closely spaced buildings, the mill buildings, we should be responding on every alarm in the city with at least three engine companies and a ladder company. In fact, two ladder companies. We used to do that years ago when I first came on to the apartment. We don't do that today. I mean, we're responding, because we only have four trucks in service, four engine companies. If we respond with three engine companies, which we really should have, that leaves just one engine company covering the rest of the city.
Yeah.
And if we get another call, and this happens quite a bit in Lawrence, uh, you have that one engine company responding alone. And that's a
And, and I don't want to.
Dangerous situation.
I don't want to feel like I'm being cantankerous. I just, it's, it's late and I'm just trying to get to the bottom. So we had a pump truck from Andover and a pump truck from another community come. I'm pretty sure we're going to be fighting it tight just to keep everybody we have on staff right now.
Yes.
So I know we're not going to be able to open that other, the house. So that being said, would, having another piece of equipment, do we have enough of those equipment, pieces of equipment to this, to, to deploy out? Um, with the bo, with the bodies we have? Do we have to, do we need a pump truck? Because that to me, I think like, if Andover's here.
The equipment that we have in service is based upon a number of personnel that I have available to me and that equipment.
I get it now.
You know, so if I have a reduction in manpower and I don't have the people to me and the equipment, the equipment comes out of service.
And are they cross-trained enough so that like, if they have to jump on?
We have to be jacks of all trades. We have to be able to do everything.
Well, I appreciate the effort too. I don't, I don't want you to think that I'm taking this stuff like lightly. I'm just trying to figure it out. These are big numbers. These are people's lives to do, you know. I mean, we were talking about this. We, we weren't really trying to talk about this to make this a news story. We were actually trying to just figure this thing out.
No, I, I understand. I appreciate that. I appreciate your interest, you know, really, seriously.
And, and I know that, again, like I said at the beginning, sometimes we can't solve the whole problem.
Right.
And it feels like insurmountable and we feel like this isn't happening.
No, but, but the good thing, you know, the good news tonight is that, again, the plan is in place. And it's, uh, it's being put in motion. It already has been put in motion. And again, you know, again, once again, I appreciate the work that you did last year, you know, in approving that bond so that we could get this work done. Then again, this is just the first step. Uh, there is more work, obviously, that's going to be, to be done. The amount of money that, uh, you know, has been approved right now, it's just the start of that project. But there is enough, I believe, I don't know, I could be incorrect, but, uh, you know, the revenue that's being generated, uh, because of improvements that are being made, new revenue sources are being brought in. I would hope that this can be ongoing and that, in a sense, you know, the, the consumers will actually be paying for, you know, the, the upgrade of the system without any increase in rate or, you know, minimal increase in rates. Am I incorrect? We have, you know, just to mention too, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, Lawrence still has, when you talk about water and sewer rates, you know, we have some good bargains here.
Lower water of every community.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we got the highest unemployment rate too, so.
Right. And that's, again, that's, understandable.
Just a question in reference to this, um, test that's going to be going on, Mr., Mr. Jim, Mr. Resab, this is a, um, what is that test you're going to go? What's the pressure test you're doing? Is that what you're doing?
Uh, we're going to be, in fact, I, that's one thing I wanted to, um, just make sure everybody understood. We are moving forward very quickly. Two things are going to start happening. One, next week, where we're going to be working with, uh, we're going to be sending our engineers and people from the water department. And we're going to start to do flow tests on the hydrants throughout the city. So that's going to start next week. They'll be, we'll be having, putting notices in the newspapers to let everybody know. And also probably within a month, there'll be a contractor out replacing some of these broken valves. So things are going to start moving, um, very quickly. And then, so we want to, we want to get the information that we will use to calibrate our hydraulic model. That's the flow test. While we're doing the flow test, we'll also get information on, on the hydrants. If it works, if it doesn't work, of course, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll be noting that.
Wasn't, wasn't there a hydraulic test some, done sometime in the nineteen nineties?
There was one done, um, I think in the early nineties.
No. Has anything of, the results of that test, okay, showed where there was some problem somewhere within the city, is that correct?
Yes.
And nothing has been done. So we know that those were problematic at that time, so they're still problematic now.
I, I, yes, in fact, it looks like some areas are worse. Unfortunately, this tuberculation, uh, in, in addition to the, the fires apparently moving quicker, that tuberculation just continues. So, you know, the, twenty years ago, those pipes weren't as in bad a condition as they are today. It just continues to, it's just rust buildup in the pipe and it just continues. So.
Is there any way of initially working off of that list first, which were bad at that time?
The.
Can you work off of that list and, uh, and start in that area?
A lot of, we looked at that list, um, things, the other thing that has really changed in the city is a lot of the large water users have moved out. So a lot of the recommendations in that old report were to get really adequate fire protection and water to some of these bigger industries that are no longer, no longer in existence. So the, uh, the downtown, most of the downtown area was in pretty good shape. They, you know, years ago, they needed a lot of water. So you've got big water mains, uh, through the downtown area. It's out in the residential areas that, that are predominantly these six inch mains that are, that are a problem. And when they were put in and they, they weren't tuberculated, they were probably fine. But as the diameter of the main started to get smaller and smaller, that's when you have the problems. So.
So that, that study is of no use to you whatsoever right now?
It's, it's information. It is information, but it, again, you know, times were different then. It was, it was, it addressed some of these issues, but it was focused on different things.
I'm not, I'm not saying to stop the current testers that you want to do, but I just thought maybe it might give you a little, um, initial boost to go in certain areas that you know that the problems exist.
It does. It gives us areas to focus on. Uh, we're also going to be meeting with, with, with the chief and go over areas that he's had, you know, problems in addition to the, the problems that we know about recently with the two recent fires.
Yeah, so some of that work.
Have all of that information and start, you know, and, and start working on the system.
Right, so some of that, the, the work that has to be done as a result of this study is just not going to start when your study is finished. You can start doing some of that work now.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick question. I know John gave us, gave us a good example, one of the pipes that are clogged. Just because they clog doesn't mean you have to replace the pipe, correct? You can just get a snake it with a blade, four inch blade and just clean it.
You, yes, you run something through there that scrapes that off.
Correct.
Um, and then you put a cement mortar lining inside. And then that, that'll never happen again. You just clean it up and, and it, and it won't tuberculate again.
So it doesn't mean that we're going to have to replace all the piping. We can salvage a bunch of them, snake them. Correct?
Yes. So again, what we'll do is, is come up with recommendations. You want to, you want to, there's going to, ideally, you probably would want to clean and line every single six inch main in the city. That would be cost prohibitive, um, you know, maybe someday, but you're talking years down the road. So you really want to prioritize your dollars. So.
Well, the numbers that we think we can spend is actually less. If we can snake it and save the pipes.
Yes, yes. And my guess is.
So twenty million is probably ten.
Some of it will be more economical to clean it. In other areas, it'll be better to put a larger main with, where then you'll feed some of these smaller mains off that larger main. The problem is there's just too many interconnecting six inch mains. And if there are few larger mains, um, that would actually act kind of as a, as a, to reinforce those areas, then the neighborhood will be in good check.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye, propose. Nice having.
Sorry.
That's okay. Anybody else?
I have a quick question.
Councilor Monty?
Just sort of ask. Um, if we know what some of the problem areas are, just to help, um, finagle with this whole pump situation, if maybe we could. pump situation, if maybe we could just put all of, something like preliminary where it says, um, you know, like, the ones that we know, they're like high, high alert type pumps, like, these really shouldn't be used on these streets. And maybe, um, when they're being dispatched and they're en route, because I know that, you know, they're not, someone's not going to sit there and say, you know, let's find out which hydrants, because they need to get there, when they're en route, that the dispatch person is looking that information up so that they can relate to the truck by the time they get there, that, don't use XYZ pump, or don't try using that pump because it's not gonna, just something that is effectively going to work until we get this report three or four months from now. Since, um, Councilor Rivera was, you know, stressing the point that we kind of needed to do a little something now, I mean, I sense he has the knowledge of knowing everything that moves underneath the city, so he knows how everything goes along, he knows what the pressures are, or how much is coming out, and all that good stuff, so he has the knowledge at hand. I mean, it's not going to be something, um, one hundred percent, but at least he's going to know, okay, I know that those two pumps are not going to have enough pressure, you know, let's put those two on there. And until we get, you know, the hydraulic system pressure, or whatever it is that they called it, done the correct way, we at least know, don't touch these, don't lose time connecting to these. And then the other thing that I have a question on, Park Street has smaller pipes and stuff like that, we've had a couple of, um, laundromats put in, one on top of Tower Hill, Essex Street, does that affect the, the pressure up there? And then we also had another one, um, just recently put in over here on Park Street, over by, um, the Arlington Towers, over by that area, does that affect the pressure at all?
From Lawrence Street to Berkeley, if the problem is-
Okay.
You have an eight-inch triangle-
That is problem, no problem.
And then at the top on Essex Street, over there by, by the-
Yeah, that's not a problem.
That's not a problem over trying to get water or any of that stuff? Okay, I was just wondering, because those are new, you know, and they, to my, you know, I don't know how much, how much water they suck up, or is that preventing? Because if you think about it, that, um, that laundromat is on the top of the hill, and that, and that fire just happened on the bottom of the hill, on the other end, so I just didn't know if it had-
There's a lot of these drains out there, three and a lot of six and eight-inch lines, sixteen lines, maybe, probably all of them.
Yeah.
Those get corroded like that.
Yeah.
Actually, eight-inch, ten-inch, twelve-inch, sixteen-inch, twenty, there's plenty of volume there.
Plus this valve, over the last seventy years, four o'clock in the morning, middle of winter, they shut off eight valves to stop a hydrant, when they go to turn them on, they need to turn on five of them, three of them never get turned on, no documentation. Some of the ones, maybe, near Hancock Street, go spin, they open up, you can see the water come up more, but how do you know that's open all the way? That may be halfway restricting the waterfall. These are all things we're taking care of with programs that you've already voted for, this is a valve program, and that's why we're doing that citywide, not just in-
Can they come up with a mic?
Okay. Well, yeah, so like I was saying, if, if we can come up with something just preliminary, just sort of let them know, and, and maybe the dispatch, when they're being dispatched to, en route, they could say, you know, don't touch this and that one, and-
We know how to pull a descending hydrant guide to accompany the fire department on any event at all.
Okay.
It used to ring in down at the water treatment plant, and we would dispatch a hydrant guide to the fire scene to assist the firefighters in getting on a hydrant.
Well, we have money-
Just a point of information, that, that's exactly what I don't want to happen. Clearly, that's going to be a cost prohibitive thing.
I was going to say, do we have money to-
All I've been asking for all evening was just that if you do a list that they have on hand, it's plenty, it's zero cost, John. I don't, I don't want to, Director I sense, I just want to be clear, it's not asking to solve the problem in its entirety, we're trying to figure out what we do to get through the summer, so we can wait for the report, clearly, we have to wait for the report to tag them, but-
Clearly, we're going to be much more informed with, and interface more often with the fire chief as his needs dictate.
All right, cool.
We're here, we'll do a blackboard session every day if they want, to show them which hydrants work and which don't. We're willing to assist in any way, shape, or form, right up into including how to fix the problem.
All right, good.
All right, I'm going to send this item to committee, I want to thank you and your department, I see your whole department is here, which I'm glad to see your whole, that they care, but I think we need to come up with a, with a plan. We've debated this issue for an hour and a half, and I'm still kind of confused of how we're going to handle it from now on. I'm glad we have a plan, and I hope that we stay on course, because looking at the email that you provide to us from two thousand and nine, and here we are, twenty thirteen, and we still haven't done much, we have done a lot, but not to the point where we need to be.
This department's been more aggressive in the past three years than it's been in the past fifty.
So, I understand that, but I'm saying, how many of these problems do we address over the past three years?
Several.
So we have a bunch of pumps that we already fixed, a bunch of-
We have hydrant repairs we've made, line repairs we've made, we have starting, you got a twelve-inch water main up on Mount Vernon Street that was just recently installed.
Okay.
Well, excuse me, Bob Fazio, two hundred Carmen Street, we, uh, we found a closed valve on that Mount Vernon Street job, we put a brand-new one in, and we found a closed valve in the industrial park.
You found one that was closed?
Yep.
How often do we check these, these hydrants?
We, we do check them, the valves, we do check them, but once in a while, somebody will call, again, I said, four o'clock in the morning, there's a break, somebody will open three of them, and no one knows about the fourth. But we're working on a system, painting the valves as we shut them, so everything painted, it's turned back on, so.
My personal opinion, I like, just, I don't want to beat these horse to death, but I think if we paint, color coat them, so we can see them, if we don't do something about it, out of sight, out of mind, we'll forget, it's not that we'll forget about it, but I think if we color coat them, we'll see them every day, we'll drive by it every day, it's in our mind, and we'll make sure that we stay on top of it. But, I like Council Rivera's idea, but at the same time, if you guys don't think it's the proper, it's the right thing to do, I respect that, too, but it-
Because it changes, but, but we're going to do what he said, we're, basically, what we're going to do is get the information from the water department to the fire department, from the fire department to the water department, and we're going to have open communications, that's basically what this is all about, and we'll get it done.
All right, thank you, and I thank you, thank you to the, your whole team. And what's Chief Burgess here? Thank you for being here, and I know, uh, everybody was very eager to ask questions about this issue. Document eighty, I'm going to send it down to, uh, I'm going to send it out to the ordinance committee.
Yay.
I'm going to make you come to one of our meetings.
I love going to your meetings. Will you send it out?
I'm going to send it to the ordinance committee.
Orders?
Yeah. We'll go back in order here, document, yeah, let's see, next item on the agenda is withdrawal, document eight, stop sign, cross and see the street. Item was voted by Council Vasquez, came out from the ordinance committee to be withdrawn, Madam Chair, from the ordinance.
Thank you, Council President. At the, um, at the March twenty-first meeting of the ordinance committee, Officer Scanlon filed a report with us recommending that we not put a stop sign at this location, there is not a high propensity of accidents at that intersection over the last ten years.
We're not threatening you, are we?
And, and don't mind us.
Don't mind us. It's annoying, you just let us know, we'll just stop.
And, um, he, the recommendation was rather than to put in an additional stop sign, to repaint the crosswalks, um, increase the signage for children caution, and repost the speed limits, um, at better locations with a better new signage, and we, hoping that that will rectify the problem. If it doesn't, we can always revisit the problem, but at this time, the motion is to withdraw the document, and I make that in the form of a motion.
But here's second, and discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, next item on the agenda is old business, a snare table items. We'll go on new business, document sixty-six, Handicap Parking, seven Womack Street, submitted by Francisco Ramirez, via Council Reyes, is going down to the ordinance committee. Document sixty-seven, Rodolfo Pizzeria, one twenty-one eight South Broadway, requested place, two tables and chairs on sidewalk, submitted by Council Toomey, is going down to the ordinance committee.
Should I put a license?
Document sixty-eight, second-hand dealer license, submitted by Jane Cosm, Hundred Water Street, one bait, one, one bait street, Lawrence, is going down to the ordinance committee. Document sixty-nine, debt, refinancing, debt services reduction, two-point-eight million, submitted by Council Vice Chair Rivera, is going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document seventy, Fire Department Staffing Financial Review, submitted by Council Vice Chair Rivera, is going down to the, uh, Budget and Finance Committee. Document seventy-one, Iglesias Pena Costa, La Cenda Antigua the second, request permission to use the Campagnon Common Park to hold a Christian concert on July twentieth, from two PM to six PM, submitted by Elizabeth Rosario, is going down to ordinance committee. Document seventy-two, second-hand dealer license, ninety-two Broadway, submitted by John Wolf, is going down to the ordinance committee. Document seventy-three, Ogo dealer license, ninety-two Broadway, submitted by John M. Wolf, is going down to the ordinance committee. Document seventy-four, Palm Broker Dealer License, ninety-two Broadway, submitted by John M. Wolf, is going down to the ordinance committee. Document seventy-five, K of C, it's not K O C, the chicken place, K F C, Association in five oh side Sutton Street, North Andover, confirmatory deeds, submitted by Robert O. Sullivan Square, is going down to the Housing Committee, Housing Committee. Document seventy-six, proposed amendment to municipal ordinance, title eighteen, local wetland ordinance, submitted by Daniel McCarthy, land use planner, is going down to the Housing Committee. Document seventy-seven, water and sewer capital projects approved in twenty-twelve for one-point-three-nine million, review and update, submitted by Council Vice Chair Rivera, is going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document seventy-eight, mid-year financial review, expenses and revenue, submitted by Council Vice Chair Rivera, is going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document eighty, review and acceptance of grants awarded to City of Lawrence Community Development Department, twenty-ten, Leta Bayman grant for three million dollars, and Health Homes Grant for a hundred thousand dollars, a total of three-point-one million, submitted by James H. Barnes, Community Development Director, is going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document eighty-one, review and acceptance of grants awarded to City of Lawrence Department of Community Development, uh, for the Health Initiative Project for a hundred thousand, Dana Farber Cancer Institute, fifty-six thousand, Dana Farber Cancer Institute Project Clear, sixteen thousand two hundred, for a total of one-hundred-seventy-two thousand two hundred, submitted by James Barnes, Community Development Director, is going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document eighty-two, review and acceptance of grants awarded to City of Lawrence Community Development Department for twenty-ten HMIS two grant, not sure what that is, fifty, for fifty-three thousand three hundred and forty-five, and twenty-eleven HMIS two grant for fifty-three thousand three hundred and forty-five, for twenty-eleven, and HMIS grant for twelve thousand four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, for a total of one-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-one-zero-six, submitted by James Barnes, is going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document eighty-three, loading zone, two seventy-six Essex Street, submitted by Ben Lyons, via Council Toomey, going down to ordinance committee. Document eighty-six, Community Day Charter School, request permission to use the Manchester Street Park on June sixth, from four PM to nine PM, to host a family fun night for students, parents, teachers, and staff from various charter schools, submitted by Susan Petrac, Petracis, I hope I didn't butcher that name.
You did good.
Did I say it right, Council Vice Chair? Parent Advisory Board Coordinators, is going down to the ordinance committee. Document eighty-seven, Blanco Arriba Presente, request permission to use the Manchester Street Park on May nineteenth, from ten AM to seven PM, to hold the day with Blanco Arriba, submitted by Ricardo Fabian Ricardo de Jesus, is going down to the ordinance committee. There's another item, Council, that I'd like to suspend rules and, to add it to the agenda, and I'm going to send that item to the Personnel Committee. It's an appointment by the mayor, this gentleman to be, to appoint this gentleman, Lawrence Caloppi of ninety-one, ninety-five Hancock Street, to the border register. I'm looking for a motion to suspend the rules and add this item to the agenda.
So moved.